Good evening, everyone. I am reconvening in open meeting the Board of Supervisors on July 7th, I do believe, 2021.
Yes, ma'am. At the end of your day session, you entered a closed meeting, so you'll need to certify that this time, and I'll read the certification statement for you. Do each of you certify that, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, and considered by the Board of Supervisors in closed meeting? If you could just pull the board, please.
All right. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. All right. The first item we have on the agenda is the public hearing for Mount Airy Field Incorporated. Do I read the TM or the RZ?
Ms. Summers will give an introduction for rezoning 20-10-01.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mount Airy Field LLC has requested a rezoning from rural residential RR5 to residential R2 for tax map number 3859. The parcel is 35.1663 acres in size. The parcel is adjoined by parcels that are zoned RR5, rural residential, highway commercial, village residential, and agricultural. The applicant prepared a slope analysis taking into consideration the requirements of RCC 17022 to determine the number of lots possible for a potential subdivision. His analysis, which has not been verified, indicates the development potential of the parcel is five lots with the current zoning of RR5 and 13 lots with the requested R2 zoning. Even if this rezoning is approved, the applicant must still comply and complete the subdivision ordinance and process. VDOT has commented that after a site visit, there will likely be available locations that could possibly meet VDOT standards for entrances. VDOT has reviewed a draft sketch plat, but overall data was not sufficient for a full subdivision review, which is predictable at this stage. The Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority have issued a permit for one EDU for a single-family dwelling, but they have indicated that the system has the current capacity to connect 13 additional homes. No future capacity is guaranteed. The applicant has proffered that the following uses, which otherwise be by right or by special use permit or special exception in the R2 district, shall be prohibited in the event the property is rezoned. Carnivals sponsored by nonprofit organizations, fairs, or shows; schools, public or private, within a house or building with greater than 25 students; medical care facilities with less than 10 beds; medical care facilities with greater than 10 beds; post office, library, public safety facility, solid waste transfer station; telecommunication facilities greater than 3.5; animal shelter, taxi service, a bus terminal, a farm winery Category 1, and a farm winery Category 2. The Planning Commission recommended to move this application to the Board for further consideration pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2284 on February 17th of 2021. An applicant and his attorney are both present.
Thank you. So it would be appropriate for the applicant to provide any input to the Planning Commission or to the Board of Supervisors in advance of your public hearing?
Mr. Brown?
You're up.
[laughing].
Thank you, Mr. Curry, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Michael Brown. We all, you all know me. I'm here representing Mount Airy Field LLC, which is the owner and applicant in connection with this rezoning. Mr. Taylor, Tom Taylor and Cheryl Taylor are the principals in that LLC, and they're both present this evening as well. I know that you have a lot on your agenda this evening, so I'm going to try and be as succinct as possible. At the same time, I feel like there are a number of topics that I need to cover in my opening remarks. In your package of materials is a supplemental letter and some supplemental materials that we submitted to you through Michelle and Gary last week. If I could ask Gary to bring up the revised concept plan that was in those materials. There are a couple of features of that plan that I'd like to highlight, that right there, primarily because at the scale in which that plan was submitted, they are really hard to make out. One is not hard to make out, probably the one that is maybe the most import to a lot of the public commenters and to several of the Board members in comments that have already been expressed, and that is the issue of access to the hypothetical subdivision lots if this rezoning were approved. What this revised concept plan illustrates, thank you, Mr. Curry, what this revised concept plan illustrates is that it is possible to lay out the lots and lay out the access to the lots in such a way that all of the lots will, in fact, access U.S. Highway Route 211 and not have to use Woodward Road for access. It can be a little bit unclear, so with the Chair's indulgence, if I could walk up and...
Yes, sir.
What you see, of course, is 211 up here. There was an earlier concept plan in your materials that also appeared in the most recent edition of the Rappahannock Doo that showed a street that came through, connected to Woodward Road, and two cul-de-sac streets that connect. In this revised concept, what we're demonstrating is that it's possible to bring a street, almost essentially as like you think of a frontage road, that runs parallel to Woodward Road and serves as access to all of these lots, bringing all of those lots, plus the ones over here, all out across the bridge and out onto 211, removing any of that potential traffic from Woodward Road. That's fairly apparent even at that scale, but I did want to point that out for the Board members. There is a second concept demonstrated on this document that's much more difficult to see, and that relates to the location of potential houses on the lots, particularly... Thank you. Thank you, Gary. If you can bring up the bottom part of it. Particularly those lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, those that are running along Woodward Road. It's still difficult to see, but what the surveyor has shown is, tried to show the topographical contours of that property. The high point of this property really runs right near or along the frontage of Woodward Road, and then it drops off, not surprisingly, it drops off as it goes down towards Thornton River. And what the surveyor is illustrating is that by laying the lots out in this way, those houses, hypothetical houses, bearing in mind, and we'll get to this in more detail later, bearing in mind that these are one-story houses. Those houses can be tucked over the edge of that top slope, down, over, along, using the actual natural contour of the property to diminish the impact of those houses as you're driving down Woodward Road. So again, trying to utilize the natural contour of this property and diminish that. I'm not claiming, I don't believe we would know from this, that it would render all of those houses, that you couldn't see them at all from the road. But it does greatly diminish their impact on their visibility by doing that, and that's not, I wanted to call that out because that's not totally apparent from the scale of this concept plan. For the amendment of zoning districts and your zoning ordinance in general, you basically have one small section from the Code of Virginia that talks about when that's appropriate, and the guidance that you're given from that one code section says that it's whenever the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice require it, that the Board, you as the governing body, may amend, supplement, or change the regulations, the district boundaries, or a classification of property, and that's why we're here before you this evening. Again, it bears emphasizing that that's permitted whenever public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice require it. It's worth observing, then, that the Board's decision should not be based on, you know, how many people show up in support of an application, how many people show up in opposition to an application. It's not a head-counting exercise. It's about evaluating the application on its merits and making the decision based upon good zoning practice and principles. It's also not, it's worth pointing out, even though we've tried to demonstrate how the hypothetical houses, how we could diminish the impact of those from a visibility standpoint, it's also not about the preservation of view sheds. If the Board were to review the pertinent sections of the Code of Virginia, you would find no reference to the principle of preserving a view shed in the Code of Virginia. This, I think, is important, and I want to get to it at the beginning of these comments because while our Rappahannock County ordinance refers to, quote, "the aesthetic values and priorities of the local citizenry," you will find that in the county code. That principle is nowhere to be found in the Virginia Code sections which set forth the permissible purposes of zoning ordinances or the matters to be considered in drawing and applying zoning ordinances and districts. Those are to be found in 15.2, that's Title 15.2, 2283, and 2284. You won't find a reference to aesthetics, you won't find a reference to view shed, and I'd urge the Board members to bear that in mind. I'm not going to read verbatim all of Section 2283. It's a lengthy code section, but it's the one that talks about the principles that should govern the enactment or amendment of a zoning ordinance, and I do want to simply call attention to a few of those principles. One of those is to reduce or prevent congestion in the public streets. By right, it's worth observing that the landowner tomorrow could submit a subdivision plan to the zoning office that subdivided five lots in a residue on this property, and each one of those theoretically could have its access as a driveway onto Woodward Road. That's by right. I think fundamentally, we all understand that, but it bears mention. The recent amended concept plan that we were just looking at a moment ago illustrates that, you know, first off, if the rezoning is approved and the lots are configured in such a way, all of that access can come out and come onto Route 211. A prior, the prior version of the concept plan that you have in your materials also illustrated that a cross-street connecting Woodward Road and Route 211 could be part of the plan that would encourage drivers to avoid the intersection and the steep portion of the road as it goes down into the village. Personally, I continue to believe that that's a good option, that it could serve as a real benefit to a lot of the other property owners on Woodward Road, taking all of that traffic that now has to go down into Sperryville and come out on Main Street in the village, and instead putting in a cross-street here, as we showed it in our earlier concept, and routing all of that down onto 211 as part of the public system of roads. Another principle that you're urged to consider in the statute is to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community. In a recent public meeting unrelated to this application, I noted, a public commenter alluded to the concern that recent approval of the many tourist home applications that had been working their way through the approval process in some sense eroded or compromised the sense of neighborhood or community, that those houses not being occupied by a family on a 365-day basis was somehow engendered a, you know, I don't know, it somehow lessened the sense of neighborhood or community. I found those comments interesting in considering the context of this application. You know, as a result of our restrictive zoning and subdivision ordinance that was adopted 40-plus years ago, so many of the residents of this county are scattered across the countryside. They're not in neighborhoods or communities. They're out on much more widespread farms and in isolated or individual residences. That's not a personal criticism, it's just an observation that if we want to do what the Code of Virginia says to facilitate the creation of convenient, attractive, and harmonious communities, this is one of the things that should be borne in mind. It's also fair to observe as someone here in this community who does a whole lot of real estate closings, handles a lot of real estate transactions, and have been doing that since the early 1990s, I think I can observe with some confidence that there has been very little new construction of new homes in and around the villages during that same time period when we have lots of other homes being constructed and more scattered around the countryside. The point being made is this rezoning, if approved, would enhance the village of Sperryville, and we believe would lend itself directly to the creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community, which is one of the express goals of the state ordinance. Two other principles that come out of that ordinance, and I'll address them together. One is to encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment and enlarge the tax base, and also to promote the creation and preservation of affordable housing suitable for meeting the current and future needs of the locality, as well as a reasonable proportion of the current and future needs of the planning district within which the locality is situated. This rezoning application has, from the very beginning, had as one of its express goals the provision of affordably priced housing for low-to-moderate-income professionals and families. Mr. Taylor, as all of you probably are aware, has decades of experience in the home-building business. The Board has in your supplemental materials five examples of homes that the applicant has determined would be offered and would meet that goal, affordably priced housing, ranging in pricing from $299,000 to $349,000, depending upon optional basements and garages, but all one-story, all single-level living, all, you know, not two-story, big, large You all have received comments and will no doubt hear tonight that there is no proof, there's no proof of a lack of affordably priced homes in this market. I submit to you in advance that that is simply not an accurate depiction of our reality here. If you were to go back and look at the last, let's say, year's worth of editions of the Rappahannock News and look at the advertisements that the Realtors like to run in every edition, I submit you would find only a handful, literally only a handful of houses, falling within that price range of the kind of house that Mr. Taylor would build on these lots. You've also received comments, and there's been comments made in previous meetings, that there are many, many dozens of undeveloped lots of two acres or less in and around this area that would be permitted under R2 zoning. Why those observations, if they're accurate, which I question, fail to take into account is while those lots may in fact exist, they do not help alleviate the need for affordably priced homes if they are not on the market for sale and if no one is building a house on them. For whatever reason, they're not being sold, they're being held, whether the person who owns them intends to build their own at some point, or for whatever reason, or if the lot is not suitable for building. When you start hearing those figures about, oh, there's all these lots out there that are undeveloped, just bear that in mind, that there could be any number of factors, any one of which is keeping those lots off the market and unavailable to alleviate this problem of affordably priced housing in this county. As active and observant members of our community, you may and you should rely upon your own knowledge of what your friends, your family, your constituents are telling you, and what common sense tells you, which is that our actual population in this county is declining. That's a real figure. That's a real number, and that a major factor contributing to that population decline is the demonstrable lack of affordably priced homes for young professionals and families who want to live here and work here. I'd like to also take just a few minutes to turn to the other code section that, as Board members, you have to bear in mind when making this decision, and that's 15.2-2284. Those are what the Code of Virginia referred to as matters to be considered in drawing and applying zoning ordinances and districts. Again, I won't give you the whole laundry list, that will take too much time, but I do want to call out some of those matters that the Code of Virginia specifically talks about. Number one is the existing use and character of property in the area. Mr. Curry, if you could bring up that color map, the zoning map, which was also, we submitted in our, yeah, there you go. Even at a glance, I submit, even at a glance, without even studying it, your zoning map suggests that this property, which appears to be a hole in the adjoining zoning, is more reasonably suited to the higher-density R2 zoning, adjoining immediately, adjoined immediately on the east by Village Residential VR zoning and by the HZ and VR zoning that extends all the way down the highway, and in the case of VR zoning... ...all the way out here to the point west of the westernmost point of the subject property. Bear that in mind. That's one factor, the use, the character of the, the existing use and character of the property in the area. The second factor that the Code enjoins you to consider is the comprehensive plan. First, let's bear in mind, the comprehensive plan is a guide. It's not the law. It is binding in and of itself only to the extent that it is implemented by you as members of this Board through the zoning and subdivision ordinances. The comprehensive plan, while an admittedly important document, and I don't diminish its importance, it is only advisory in nature. The law does not require uniform consistency between the comp plan and county zoning. I think that was something that came out in your work session that you had in May. The suggestion, so the suggestion in an earlier staff report that somehow your consideration and potential approval of this rezoning request would require an amendment to the comp plan, I'd say is simply incorrect. That's not, that's not accurate. All of that said, a great deal of time, energy, and effort went into the formation of that comp plan, and I acknowledge that, and for that reason, it should not be dismissed out of hand, and I wouldn't for a second suggest that you should. Relevant tonight is that the comp plan speaks to moderate growth in and around the core village areas of the county and the need for low and affordably priced homes. On page 88, Principal Number Four of the comprehensive plan, it encouraged, "to encourage residential development in designated growth areas and recognize the importance of affordable housing." Page 88, Principal Four, Policy Four, "Consider affordable housing needs, particularly for seniors and the disabled, and explore aging-in-place opportunities." The houses, housing examples that you have in your materials tonight are exactly the kind of house that is appropriate for somebody, a senior, who is looking to stay in this community, stay in the village of Sperryville, live on one floor, and be able to stay where they are. Page 96, Residential Development of One to Five Acres. Medium-density development, one dwelling unit per one to five acres in and around existing village areas in residential village, residential, and rural residential zoning districts. When considering areas of future building suitability as well as public utilities and transportation, low-density residential development continues to be appropriate in the conservation and agricultural areas, while medium-density development should continue to be focused in and around the county's villages. Page 83, Chapter Six, Goal 11. Define the future boundaries of growth in village and commercial areas necessary to preserve our community character and to maintain the balance that exists today while considering the needs of senior citizens and the disabled and the need for affordable housing options." All of that is from our current comp plan, and all of it entirely consistent with this application this evening. Another matter that you're supposed to consider is the suitability of property for various uses. This property is not a working farm. Yes, it's agricultural. You can make hay on it. You could put up fences. It doesn't have fences, but you could put up fences and put a few cows out there. But the materials demonstrate, that doesn't make it a farm, and the materials demonstrate that the ample suitability of this property with its access to public wastewater, utilities, and access on the public highway, and for creating, its best use is for creating a small neighborhood of homes. You're supposed to consider the current and future requirements of the community as to land for various purposes. We've touched on that already. I won't belabor that point. You're supposed to consider the transportation requirements of the community. We touched on that earlier. Again, that's keeping all of these lots feeding into Route 211, and I submit, an even superior, possibly superior plan, putting in that cross-street that would actually take existing traffic off of Woodward Road onto Route 211. You're supposed to consider the preservation of floodplains. The concept plan, I won't ask Gary to go back to it, but the concept plan reflects that all floodplain areas would be protected and preserved within the larger residue parcel. You see it there, with a slight area running along the boundary of a few of those lots. All of that could be preserved as part of the open space. That's part of the requirement in our subdivision ordinance. You're to consider the encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the locality. Here, I think back to Supervisor Frazier's comments in a planning commission meeting that occurred at the end of last year, and I hope he won't mind paraphrasing him, but I thought they were apt, because in that meeting, Mr. Frazier pointed out, noted, maybe is a better word for it, that our strict zoning and subdivision ordinance, which we have now had for 40-plus years, with its one-per-25-acre dwelling density that we're all so familiar with, has had the perhaps unintended consequence of pushing residential development and subdivision of parcels out into the countryside, onto our larger agricultural properties. That's been the effect. That may not have been the intent 40-plus years ago when it was enacted, but that's been the effect, maybe through misunderstanding of what was required under our zoning and subdivision ordinance, or maybe just as a result of it. That has had the effect of causing our, you know, our beautiful agrarian countryside to be dotted as you drive down every road with houses on 25-acre parcels. We've all seen it. It's happened over the last 30 years. I want to say just a few words about precedent, because I hear, and as a lawyer, the term precedent is a particular sticking point, so if you'll bear with me. I have a real doubt that, under the law, a zoning decision, a rezoning application creates any precedent. As one application comes before you, you're supposed to look at that property. Every property's different. Every property's different. You evaluate it on its own merits. So there's very little, if any, in the way of precedent that a rezoning creates, but I submit to you that if there is any value in your decision on this application as precedent for this Mount Airy property, this precedent creates an incredibly high bar for a future rezoning application that may come before you. Consider, it is highly improbable that another property of this size will come before you that has access to public wastewater in the way this one does, and as it's shown in your materials. This property is served by public wastewater with tap connections available for each of the 13 hypothetical lots that could be created by the subdivision. This property fronts on not only a state secondary road with hundreds and hundreds of feet of frontage, but also a state primary highway, which affords ample means of access to the lots that would be created. Those, those factors alone, then, I would suggest to you are not factors that you are likely to see in combination with another property that might come before you in a rezoning context. Finally, just a couple of words about groundwater. I have, I've noted in a few of the comments that have been made, a great concern about the impact on the groundwater supply that the provision of 13 houses might create, bearing in mind by right, it can already be five in a residue. There were several studies that were conducted within the last 10 years that you may remember or you may have access to. And I don't, let's see, I did not pick it, take it out of my file, but the one that I remember most distinctly as one that was prepared by NSAP in Culpeper, it was done around the 2013, 2014 timeframe. And what that showed was that the groundwater recharge for the Village of Sperryville area was over half a billion, that's billion with a B, gallons of water on an annual basis, and that the average recharge for an acre of land was 699 gallons of water per acre per day, bearing in mind what the typical family of four uses in terms of water consumption on a daily basis, not even 699 gallons of water per day. I submit to you that there is ample groundwater, as borne out by that study, and a similar study, which I'm not going to cite, that involved the property at the other end of the Village of Sperryville, but came to very much the same conclusions, that there is ample groundwater supply, I'm happy to say, in the Village of Sperryville. So that concludes my remarks. I would like to introduce Mr. Taylor, who has just a few very brief remarks that he would like to make. Thank you all. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you very much.
Very thorough.
I don't mean to interrupt, Madam Chairman, but there's people sitting in the back. Are there any more seats available that we can accommodate everyone and be comfortable?
Plenty of seats to the right side of the gallery. Maybe take a minute, a lot of people walk in, is one way to solve it.
Of course, people are welcome to stand, but if you'd like to be seated, there is room.
Did we confirm that it's working downstairs?
How are you doing?
Hey, Claire.
Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
No, good job.
Can I look at this down?
Sure.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me get up to maybe say a few words. It's just going to be very short. It's been a lot of things I've heard and read, and I just thought maybe I'd give you a very brief overview of my thought process, how it got started, and where we are today. We was thinking that, I guess I was back in my home, I've been retired a couple of years, and really hadn't been thinking about the, my area property at all. It'd been in our family on and off for since the Civil War, and so, as much as our, much property we have, has been in the family a long time. And so, I just, you know, with the last, I think it was last spring, or the end of the spring, the comprehensive plan was being reviewed to be updated, and so it became apparent that my RR5 zoning property was going to, it looked like it was going to be, and had been excluded by the planners from the Village of Sperryville. They were trying to put a band or a rubber band or a circle around the villages, and it turned out it was, the RR5 didn't survive that, and, but as it turned out, because our property, which I'd always been told, even by previous Supervisor Pete Esters 35 years ago, that, you know, we had access to the sewer, it was a good location, it was in the village, we had small lots all the way around, basically all the way around it, we had good access to everything, we had, we thought we had plenty of water also as far as, you know, we have springs and wells and not in trouble having any water there. So anyway, it turned into, it kind of got some publicity through the Mayfair Rap and the Rappahannock News, and so I actually had some folks start coming to see me, and when they catch me out and say, hey, look, are you interested in selling the lot? And most of the folks that were asking me, probably a five-acre lot would probably be too expensive, at, so if you said a couple hundred thousand, say $200,000, so it got to me, it got me to thinking, like, you know, if we could reduce the size of the lot, maybe make it more affordable, so I'm thinking like, two acres would be like $100,000. Of course, you do have some costs with that that would, would be included, so, I mean, I was, you know, you hoped in that 60, 70, 75,000 a lot. So anyway, that's, that's how the thought process come about, and I said, well, you know, it makes sense. It's near the, you know, some high-density properties all around the edges, and it's, I considered it in the village based on the map that Mike just spoke about, and thought, you know, it might be a very good candidate to, you know, to do a transition, not to go, you know, half-acre lots or acre lots, but maybe a good transition. And of course, in that time, I went through the planning commission, planning commission meetings, and of course, I get to read all the emails and get to hear a lot of opinions, and we took them all in, and we tried to address them the best we could as a rezoning. As a business person, I don't think, you can, you can only proffer so much because you don't know what the cost is going to be, and I think we've seen a prime example of that with the COVID, it's driven the cost of materials sky-high, and so even though I did price that house up during this period of time, I don't know how you could lock in anything down the road for any length of time. I don't think anybody would, I don't know, I wouldn't, and I don't know of anybody that would do that. So that's kind of how we got here, thinking that maybe it was a reasonable thought process, that it might fit well, we had the sewer system, and we, which was not running at total capacity, maybe it would have room for us, and I thought that I could build three or four houses a year, and in three, three years or four years, it would be done, and maybe provide some housing to people that had talked to me in person, not through the internet, not through, just, you know, in person, they saw me, said, hey, what do you think? You think you'll have any lots? I said, I don't know, but it was given, it seemed like it was kind of giving some hope to some folks, and even, and even a senior that wants to downsize and wants to stay in the county. I thought that, I was surprised about that. I was totally unexpected on that, but I thought it was very interesting that someone that has a nice place, but they're having to mow seven or eight acres, and they're saying, look, you know, it'd be nice to have a couple acres or acre to mow, and still be able to live in the area, you know. I love the area, I love the people, all the folks that have written things, either way, you know, I, you know, I love my neighbors, I love, I love seeing people, I don't dodge anybody, not going to dodge anybody. I just thought it was a, I thought it was a good idea, so that's why I did it, not for greed, not for money, not for any of the things that I've read, but I thought it was a need, and I thought that, and what I come to find out, and I'll quit after this, is the fact that in the beginning, I had no intentions of doing anything, and then this kind of came up, and as people reached out to me, I could, I could see there was a need. I really didn't think the demand was here, because we're Rappahannock County, you know, but what I'm seeing, and I don't think, it's not just, it's not COVID demand, because I could say it was, but it's not. It's, it's local demand for some affordably priced housing on lots that are not five acres or 10 acres or 25 acres, which is the bulk of our county. Well, thank you for letting me have a little say, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and continuing on to the public hearing part of this particular zoning request, I just want, because I know this is of huge interest to so many people, and I appreciate that you're here, but if we could keep comments to three minutes or less, and please keep your claps and sighs and comments to yourself, so that we can get through this in a timely manner, I would greatly appreciate that. Anyone that's coming up to speak, I've been asked to make sure that you speak your first and last name clearly, and the district that you're in, so that we make sure that we get that on the record, and I will open the public hearing period.
Good evening. I'm Mark Anderson for the Piedmont District, and I'm not compensated for what I'm about to say. The five years I've been in this county, I've heard over and over again, where we want our denser residential zoning to be is near the villages, near the villages. This particular proposal is ideal for that because it's tucked right up into the Sperryville village outline. As you know, villages are, have amorphous boundaries in this county, they're not legally defined, but if you could walk to one of these hope sites to the center of Sperryville, which I think you can fairly easily, I would say it's pretty close to the village. And as you know, the affordable housing question comes up in regard to, how cheaply can you build a quality house in this county? We have two very qualified realtors in the audience who cannot speak, but I will speak for them. The smaller the lot, the cheaper the overall price of the house. Two-acre houses sell for less than five-acre houses. If the rule of thumb is three times the cost of the lot for the finished price of the house, then you get a less expensive house if you have it on two acres. Common sense. But for me, the compelling argument for this project to be approved, this rezon to be approved, is there's only two locations in the county where you can have a public sewer system serving a subdivision. This is one of them. The other one's in Washington, and that's beyond our cognizance here. I thought, when this project was first proposed, that if the sewer authority said they had the capacity to handle that, that ought to seal the deal as far as the two acres go, and they have. They said they can do it, and I think that removes any concerns about the watershed or some problems down the line with septic systems or any of that. So I think for those reasons, the rezon is what they would call good zoning practice. And Turdy Brown cited to the Virginia Code on good zoning practice. Our, our own land use code makes good zoning practice one of the criteria you're supposed to apply when you make a decision like this. So I submit that approving the rezon to two-acre RR is probably the right choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I live in Cassington. I moved here about six months ago from Northern Virginia, because I didn't like there, and I don't want there to come here. Now, I'm not going to try to tug on your heartstrings like has been done here just now, to tell you that we need more affordable housing. Not everybody can afford what we have here. I lived, I lived in a warehouse for 10 years to save money to move to what we have here, to what many of you have here, and I was able to accomplish it. I don't want to lose or jeopardize that, because I have to make it affordable for everybody in Northern Virginia to move here. I don't think that we can continue to degrade what we have here by going from 25-acre lots to 10 to 5 to 2 to half to quarter. I lived on a quarter-acre lot. I can tell you what it's like. If our population is decreasing, bringing in low-income people, low-income housing, more crime, more drugs, a larger police force, is not going to make this county a better place. I don't think it's going to increase our quality of life here. Those of you who have lived here for a long time have benefited by what we have, and you're going to give it away? Let me be clear, there's very few people to benefit from this, very few. A couple of real estate people, the landlord himself, a couple of builders, most who don't even live in the area. So we're going to bring in people from outside our county to build this. I don't think that's in the benefit of the county either. So I'm here to rise in opposition to this. I know that there's a lot of needs by a lot of people, and we're saying that the older population needs one-story house. Well, maybe they do, maybe they don't, but changing this is not going to help. Who's going to pay for all this? We're going to add more houses? The low-income folks for this low-income housing aren't going to be the ones who are going to shoulder the burden of the taxes. It's going to be the rest of us. It's going to be the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Duxton, I'm with Stonewall Hawthorne District. I, I just want to read very briefly part of the comprehensive plan that I read last night. Quote, "Preserve the natural, historic, recreational, and scenic values, along with the healthy economy of the forested land and resource preservation districts to ensure that development in those areas remains in conformance with their natural beauty and environmental limitations." Last night, I read a good part of the comprehensive plan, along with numerous articles, testimonies, and editorials surrounding the controversial Taylor rezoning request on 35 acres on Woodward Road in Sperryville. While my beautiful Bear Bear sought comfort, a lot of you know my beautiful white pyrenees Bear Bear, sought comfort, his huge head nestled in my lap all night as we awaited a trip to Rose Hill Vet in the AM, neither of us getting much sleep. I read, I read, and I read. I was taken by facts presented and wishes and intentions articulated. The facts and wishes seemed quite remarkable in their juxtaposition. Facts, possibly 13 homes on two-acre lots to be built on Woodward Road, which follows necessarily with possibly 13 new wells dug on steep mountain acres. 130 cars estimated to travel daily, whether routed onto 211 or Main Street in Sperryville or Ashby Road for that matter, direction 231. Facts, additional residents of Rappahannock own lots on Woodward, possible future development? Question mark. Wishes articulated include possibly affordable housing offered, wishes, mind you, no guarantees, and as Michelle Summers so aptly educates us, quote, "The Rappahannock County Code does not require that a preliminary plat of an associated future subdivision be provided at the time of rezoning," end quote. In other words, if Tom Taylor wants to put up 13 ice cream stands on two-acre lots, he's got carte blanche to do so. He's under no obligation to tell us really what is, what his plans are. So it stands to reason, the first thought that pops into mind is, are we setting a precedent for future zoning applications? Are we listening to the legal world representing the Taylors, the paid advocate of Tom Taylor's wishes? By the way, an excellent attorney, and don't tell Frank this, but if I need an attorney, I might contact you. Most notably, incompetent resident zoning guru, who's most notably Michelle Summers, saying that the comprehensive plan encourages development insofar as it adheres to existing zoning parameters, not through rezoning. Adding to the mix of controversy, I read that some testified in support of the application because they liked Tom. We all like Tom. That's irrelevant. He's a great guy, talented, affable, a sixth-generation Rappahannocker. Anyone knows me knows I'm enamored of those born and raised here. In fact, to me, they're In fact, to me, they're pedigreed, and I call them with great affection, Rappahannock royalty. With all due respect to those of you who testified, he should be granted the application based on the fact that he's a nice guy. He's a businessman, and a smart one at that. He stands to make money, a lot of it, but at what expense and price and to whom? To the many folks of Sperryville who lie awake at night worried their precious piece of the world is soon to be quite possibly drastically changed, who speak tonight and who have spoken and have organized themselves out of fear, I tip my hat to you for all your hard efforts, for your passion to protect the very fabric of a small town, a tiny hamlet filled with history, goodwill, and deep friendships. They were not sworn in to protect Rappahannock's scenic essence, as are all our locally elected public officials. They do it out of a simple love which we all have. I've driven along Woodward Road in years past, a quiet, meandering road, partially paved, a touch of asphalt, possessing killer views, or should I say million-dollar views? And that's important to recognize because two-acre lots are two-acre lots, but if somebody from the city comes in and says to Mr. Taylor, "I'd like to buy all 10 of these two-acre lots, and I'll give you $5 million cash, I need to end this." I envisioned the traffic flow as I was there, and while I slowed to let a truck pass by me on a narrow gravel turn, I couldn't even imagine seven houses being built here, much less 13. And I thought about a VDOT land use manager who felt from the Department of Transportation that homes with large frontage could possibly be absorbed, and I wondered if he perhaps took a wrong turn and was on a different road. Though with all due respect, he was cautionary and clearly indicated he couldn't give a definitive without appropriate drawings.
Ms. Doxson.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm not, but I am.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Jones. I live in Sperryville, Virginia. We have a farm that fronts the Woodward Road as well, and I just want to state that I do object to this rezoning request. I think it's important to say it's a rezoning request. I personally kind of don't, I'm not necessarily in favor with the existing five-acre zoning, but this is a rezoning request, and I think that we have to look at the benefits of the good versus the many, and, I mean, of the few versus the many, and that I think our number-one asset in this county is the rural character of this county. It's our number-one quality-of-life asset, and I also would argue that it's our number-one commercial asset. I am continuously amazed at how often people are visiting a gift shop where I work and a winery where I work, and the people are coming from Culpeper, Marshall, Fredericksburg, even Albomaro County, because they, and they do not want to see this change. This is the draw. This is what brings them here. What brings them here are the active agricultural. Yes, 35-acre field is not going to generate a lot of tax revenue, but I would very much argue that residential construction, particularly greenfield residential construction, will generate greater costs than revenue. It will be expensive, and just like the gentleman said, the current residents of this county will bear that tax burden. And as far as the comprehensive plan, and I understand that the word scenic maybe doesn't appear in the state, people come here for the scenery, and the scenery is generated by agriculture. It's not just generated, if you just had trees on the road and you couldn't see past the trees, you would not have what we have in this county, which is people farming. And there's no other, I agree that if we want to have higher-density housing, I don't think two-acre housing is it. And it needs to be done in conjunction with the ability of trading people's building rights and stopping the 25-acre homesteads if we're going to do higher density someplace else, but it needs to be planned. It needs to be thought out. Where does it end? If we do this, then what would be the argument for my, not putting my Woodward Road frontage into two-acre lots? So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening. Carrie Sutton in Piedmont. I will note that Mr. Brown spent a significant portion of his disstatement talking about how you should be reviewing state ordinances. I will note that state ordinances also apply to explosive growth in Gainesville and Haymarket and Cleavage's Corner. What makes Rappahannock special is our ordinances. So I encourage you to think about our ordinances and what has been used in the comprehensive plan to keep this to be a community that is unique in the state. In November, I was one of the first few who expressed concern over the application for the rezoning. I actually live on the other side of 211 from this property, and I see it. And my concern was more not about the growth in housing. I actually believe we need more houses in the community. But my concern was the lack of information in that application for you or for the community to make an assessment of whether there is some community value to this property. Eight months later, there has been three new documents that does very little to shed any light on the value of this property to the community of Sperryville. Mr. Brown, I didn't even mention a single benefit to the community except for the boogeyman of affordable housing, which is an untrue argument. I will also note that it's been eight months. We've not had a single conversation with the applicant. If there's such a great benefit to the community, why not engage the community? We're a pretty good community. We're a small community. We know each other, and I would encourage, I would have encouraged that kind of discussion. The one new piece of information we got tonight was when Mr. Brown actually talked about the entrance into this property. He actually said it would all be from 211, which means there would be no connection to Sperryville. The only way to get to Sperryville would be to walk along 211, and if any of you have driven 211, you know there's no place to walk. Essentially, what you are doing is building a subdevelopment on agricultural land without a connection to the community. There are ways to connect it to the community. We could have had those discussions. And I'll end with this. I've had a petition opposing the rezoning in my café for the last four or five months. Two days ago, a young man, probably 22, 23, said he grew up on Atkins Road, got up, looked at it, and expressed concern, looked at my staff and me, and said, "Is this going to happen?" And we turned to him and said, "There's a chance it could." And he said, "Hell, no." This is a 24-year-old who wants this county to look like it did when he grew up here and would like it to look like it when he comes back here. So I would encourage you to think about your vote, because you can keep this county the way it is, or you can turn it into a new Cleavage's Corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monica Worth, and I live at 473 Woodward Road in Piedmont. I note that my home sits at the intersection of what may become a handy shortcut to 231 should additional traffic to Woodward, traffic be added to Woodward as a practical, if not anticipated, result of the Mount Airy subdivision rezoning application. I've lived in Rappahannock County since the 1990s and be very active in community organizations, fire and rescue in particular, environmental protection, that sort of thing, and forged relationships all across the county with people who taught me a whole lot about Rappahannock, a lot that I needed to learn. And on the spectrum of born here and come here, I think I'd make myself a bin here at this point. I ask you to consider the following factors and deny the application as presented and with any of the additional description provided by the June 29 letter from the applicant's counsel for a few reasons. The current zoning works well in the location, and the only pressure on it is one person's application. The current zoning is the product of the planning and zoning decisions that stood the test of time and anticipated the need for growth in the village of Sperryville and the surrounding community, already anticipated that. This is not about no growth. The precedent set, and I believe a precedent is set, and I believe the expert that the Board of Supervisors brought in to talk about this sort of thing did allow for the fact that there would be a precedent. The precedent set by rezoning for a single applicant's benefit is an open door to further challenges by other property owners who proffer nothing, nothing more concrete perhaps than a desire to increase the resale or development value of their property, no matter what Mr. Taylor's intentions are. And the current zoning provides a reasonable impact on the surrounding properties and community, while no urgent community need or real benefit, as far as I can see, appears to be the reason for the greater impacts on Sperryville and Rappahannock that we're being asked to accept. So what is good zoning practice? The applicant has submitted no proffers, no commitment at all, not to affordable housing, not to housing of one story, no sale to locals. All of the intentions that are stated are not put into any form of commitment to the values and uses cited as benefits. And statements go back several years, apparently, well before last year, about the fuzzy intentions, maybe in 10 years, maybe in 50, I'll build this, for when and how the land will be used. To date, the lowest level of commitment, zero, seems to be the standard by which any intentions for the community would be measured. And that's the high bar that council claims? You know, maybe, maybe not, is not a workable plan. I ask you and others here, do you want this to be Loudon or Falkir in 10 or 20 years? Do you want to live there? Why is it more expensive there? Crowding comes with costs for law enforcement, justice, first responders, sewer, all those other services, and it makes property more valuable to the point your taxes go sky-high. So you move to a place like this. Basically, do you want to live there or here? I can't believe I read this whole thing without putting my glasses on.
Wrap it up, please.
The current zoning offers the applicant plenty. It's the result of specific and outstanding planning by smart local people with deep roots here, conducted over several decades, that built reasonable growth for all into the community's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Bruce, and I'm from Sperryville in the Piedmont District. I'm also part of the Sperryville Coalition Against Rezoning, a group concerned with tonight's rezoning application. The coalition has found that property owners throughout the county share our concerns. There has been a groundswell of opposition, and tonight, we are submitting 400 signatures on petitions opposing the application. Most of the signatures on the petition are local, but over 50 of them are from tourists who come to Rappahannock for rural experience and don't want to see suburbia here. We think there are maybe eight duplicate signatures, which I have tried to remove, and I've done to the best of my ability to identify the correct districts. Sometimes you don't know which side of Gid Brown Hollow a property is on or which side of Brutus Mill Road a property is on, but we have tried to identify the districts. Those 400 petitions, there are 149 from Piedmont, 61 from Wakefield, 53 from Hampton, 49 from Stonewall Hawthorne, 27 from Jackson. We felt like that this was a community-wide issue, and there were people coming to us from other areas of the county other than Sperryville wanting to sign our petition. So we have included them with what we have submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ron. Get away from that room. It's a long one. Gary H. Hampton. This is probably one of the more important public meetings you all will have, and I say that because you spent a long time and did a good job of coming up with comprehensive plan, but that's a piece of paper. The real comprehensive plan doesn't become real until these kinds of hearings get held and decisions like you have in front of you tonight get made. We used to say, "Where the rubber hits the road." This is a tough one. I'm pro-growth. I've looked at all the projections, and if we don't do something, Rappahannock is going to have more cows, many more cows, than it has people in another 10 years. I'm worried about kids. Without kids, we don't have a public school system. I'm worried about affordable housing, which I think is a real issue. My wife and I want it to stay. I'm a pretty A-type personality. I spent a long time looking at every single property that came on the market, and there weren't more than a half a dozen my wife and I could afford that we'd want to live in. That doesn't mean that there aren't houses that are under $200,000 or $300,000. It means that for whatever reason, the kinds of homes that people want, especially if you're retiring, need certain kinds of amenities. So I think there are a lot of real issues here and not just talking points. So how do you balance growth and affordability against essentially the character of this county? Because that's what we're really talking about tonight. No one wants to live anywhere else, or we wouldn't be living here. We made choices. We came here from other places, and we love this place. We want to stay here. It's the character of the county that's at stake. I think this one tonight's not a slam dunk either way. It's the rezoning that bothers me. If it were simply putting up some more houses on the five acres, I wouldn't be here tonight. But the idea of increasing density and lowering lot sizes in that particular location, for all the reasons people have been talking about for the last couple of weeks, that one concerns me. I don't think a subdivision there, and that's what this would be, not just a few more homes, more densely packed on five-acre lots, makes a lot of sense for that particular location for reasons that have already been cited. Most of you know I'm an advocate for a planned unit development that's being considered by the town of Washington. I just want to be on the record, that's under a PUD. Every single aspect of that development will be approved by the town council for the first spade of dirt is turned. There won't be any surprises, there are always some surprises, but there'll be the genuine surprises, the ones that no one could have anticipated. There won't be the kinds of questions about, "What are we getting?" It's not a pig in the poke. It'll be approved. The county does not yet have that kind of process, and that's what we're talking about in a way, the open-ended nature that once this gets approved, if it does, the county is done, except for the building code. I think that's a risk, and it's one that I would not want to see the county take. So I would stand tonight and hope that you don't approve this rezoning request, even though I understand the property owner has a right to develop his land, and I'd like to see more houses built. But I don't think this is the right kind of development for Sperryville or for the county. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Ron Mackel from Jackson District. What I'm hearing tonight is that it's almost like if you grant, you know, you're trying to prevent development of this property, and that's simply not true. There are five-acre lots. Mr. Taylor can sell the five-acre lots, and the person that buys it has the right to build whatever they want on those lots, which could be, under our zoning laws and whatever, three-story mega-houses. So yes, you wouldn't have 13 small houses, but you would have a lesser number of much larger houses. And if you're worried about the view shed, to me, that's the problem, is that, I mean, that can happen right now, no restrictions. So you've got to think about that. Gary just mentioned PUD. That is my thinking partly on this property, is that you have an opportunity to increase the number of houses, but at the same time, limit the square footage, limit the heights. And so, yes, it would be developed, but from a view shed standpoint, there would be some control over that, which you, as the Board of Supervisors, would have. Right now, you don't have that. And the other thing on the roadway, which I found interesting, because my thinking on the roadway, which would be a benefit to the people on Woodward, particularly in Sperryville, is if Woodward was not a through road. If that road went to the top of the hill and stopped and serviced just those houses there, and then from the other direction, people would come in to Mr. Taylor's property, there would be no through traffic. That would be beneficial to the people that live there, you know, worried about the traffic right now. That would benefit them to a great extent. That would benefit them to a great extent, because that road, particularly coming out of town, is narrow and just not set up for traffic. So take the traffic away, and it's only going to be the people that live there that go up and down that road. It's, we've got to have, there's got to be some place for affordable housing. And affordable is not a good word, because it depends on how much money you've got. But you've got an opportunity to take a section of property, work out a PUD on it, control the square footage, control the height, and we provide housing, we protect the people on Woodward Road, and the problem's solved.
Thank you. Mr. Plutcher.
Madam Chairman, Ms. Smith, members of the board, Mr. Curry, Mr. Goff. All right, I'm not getting paid for this, but, you know, this is common sense, really. I mean, one of the biggest discussions I've heard in Rappahannock County in the last two years is affordable housing. If Tommy can build houses like that for anything close to that price, you better take him up on it. I'd like to buy four or five of those houses if I could afford it, because I bet an 800-square-foot house, and it was over $250,000, and I bet it in June. There is a need in this community, I can tell you from rents. I rented out a lot of houses. They were built by my grandfather in 1910. They cost $100 to build. I'm getting $1,000 a month for them. I needed, I'm not making any money on the farm, and it helps me save the farm. But there is a need in this community, and particularly in Sperryville. I'm very concerned about groundwater, and I will speak to you all on August 2nd about that. But this is going into the public sewer, and it's a two-acre lot, which makes it more affordable. And as far as petitions, you know, a lot's been debated about the 1964 zoning ordinance, I believe, and my father and George Davis and Newell Miller were probably three of the main proponents. And I don't think Diane knew them all, and she may be a little older or younger than I am, but I certainly wouldn't say she was older. But I also remember my father talking about petitions one time, and he said, you know, I don't really have much faith in petitions, Bill. I could pass one around and get half the people who signed a petition to crucify Jesus Christ again. And I don't know that, but I, just as a citizen, and I didn't plan to come speak, but this is a real need for Rappahannock County, with all respect to Ms. Jones and everybody. And the infrastructure will take it. And my understanding was the comprehensive plan basically said most of the growth should be centered around the villages. And I think if you don't do that, you're going to have an ever-widening problem, and everybody's putting their houses in these Airbnbs and everything. There's no place for people to rent. There's no place for people here in the community. And if you don't support the community and allow some growth, I think you're going to do a lot to destroy Rappahannock County. That's just my personal opinion. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, one other thing I'd like to say is, you know, I own a couple lots in Sperryville in the village. I just sold one of them, and I've got another one. But they're both quarter-acre lots. I mean, these are two, three-acre lots, I mean, which is eight to 10 times bigger than the average lot in Sperryville. And I think it complies with the comprehensive plan, certainly the spirit, and we need some lots that people can afford to live in. And I don't see where it's a scenic problem. Hell, it's up on top of Woodard Road. Most people in the county don't even know where Woodard Road is. But thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I've been impressed with the dialogue. I think that everybody is speaking very sincerely.
Name and district, please.
I think everybody has been very sincere in their comments.
Name and district, please. I didn't hear it.
Patty McGill-Petersen, Sperryville. A lot has been said about affordable housing, and I don't think anybody in this room is against affordable housing. What we heard, though, and we heard multiple times, the word "concept" and "hypothetical." Hypothetically, we could offer affordable housing. It is basically a surveyor's layout. It is not a proffer. And so, who is going to buy this housing? We know there are entrepreneurs right now, maybe like Mr. Fletcher, who would buy houses and rent them out. Airbnbs are very popular. We also know that there is a pent-up demand now by city dwellers to come here and have second homes. There is no guarantee in what council says that this will meet the debatable issue of affordable housing. We don't know who would take the houses. We don't know what they would pay for them. We don't even know that the layout that is being shared with you this evening would be the way in which the property would be developed. Council has indicated that the code says that comprehensive plans are just guides. I really was impressed with the amount of time and attention and care that the Planning Commission gave to our comprehensive plan. It was very sincerely done, and it required a lot of work. To say now that we don't have to adhere to it because of a code, a technicality, really, in many ways, what is the spirit of our county? That comprehensive plan is very much at the base of how we're thinking. The problem for Sperryville is, we don't have a local government. We are not incorporated. So we are at the mercy of zoning, case by case, spot by spot, without our own plan. And so I would hark back in concluding, I would hark back to what my friend and fellow resident of Sperryville, Carrie Sutton, said. We have to have a dialogue about where we're going. When you look at the map that was put up by council, what we didn't see was that the Shenandoah National Park is on the other side of that property. That is one of our biggest assets here. It brings people here, and they spend money, and they stay overnight, and they eat in our restaurants, and they buy things to and from the park. We don't want to destroy that asset. We need to think about how Sperryville, as a gateway community to the national park, should develop, should grow, but in what kind of careful ways. Spot zoning is just not the way to proceed.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Ms. Smith, members of the board. My name is Tommy Atkins, and I am from the Jackson District, but I also own property and a home on Woodward Road in the Piedmont District. And I have quite a bit of history here in Rappahannock County. I'm a true blue native, born October 11th, 1946, owned the property adjacent to the Mount Airy project. So I do have, I know history is probably a bad word today, because everybody seems to want to wipe out history. It ain't going to happen here. Okay, enough of that. But, you know, we've heard a lot of talk-talk here tonight. We've seen a lot of words in Rappahannock news, but we've seen very few, they all want to talk the talk, but we haven't seen very few want to walk the walk. Okay? Now, it seems like everybody wants to jump on Tom's project, put it down for all these various reasons, and they have their right to speak to that, and I have my right to speak what I'm going to say. One of the things that I see about the benefit of Tom's project is he, and before I say that, it seems like some people may have questioned the integrity or the honesty of Tom Taylor and his family. Again, I'm here to tell you, for 70, almost 75 years, I've known Tom Taylor family, and their word is better than any contract that any of you lawyers draw off today. So if he says he is going to commit to building an affordable house, it's done. So you don't have any more of your question, what are you going to do, the doubt of him. Okay? But what I was going to say about, one of the benefits that I see of this project is really for the elderly, the elderly people like myself. You know, I'm getting at an age, I've got a little property and everything, but I'm getting at the age I can't keep it up. I can't keep it up. I've got to downsize. And I don't want to be like, it's been in the past for the elderly in here. There's been no place for the elderly to go. We've had to go out of the county. And I know that Bill Fletcher back there remembers well Ms. Christine Johnston and Ms. Cotton Miller, two elderly ladies in this county, when it came down to that. And they loved this county dearly, and they did a lot of good for this county. But in their last days, they couldn't stay here, because there was no place in the county that they could go to. And it wasn't a question about affordable housing. That's not the real issue here tonight. So, you know, that's just a buzzword that some of you are hanging your head on, because none of you really know what affordable housing is, who it is for, and what is really affordable housing. Okay? And I also want to address some of these issues that some of the people have had about the reckless driving or the chaotic Woodward Road. Again, I have a lot of history with Woodward Road. The problem with Woodward Road right today is cut-through traffic. Coming out of Jenkins Hollow, coming down, flying down Woodward Road, FEDOT has tools in their toolbox, they can fix that for you. All you've got to do is ask, call off. First off, they can put no cut-through sign up, and that can be enforced. No traffic from Jenkins Hollow can come through. They'll have to go straight down onto 211 where they're supposed to go anyway. Okay? Then they've got what they call traffic calming. They can put in rumble strips, they can lower the speed limit, and they also, if necessary, they can put in speed bumps. It can be done.
Please wrap it up. I hate to interrupt you, but please wrap it up.
Okay. They also, it would mean some of these people that's got property on Woodward Road will have to take some of their property off of existing FEDOT right away. Some of them are already in existing FEDOT right away, and FEDOT does have a tool to take care of that. So thank you for your time, and I ask you to do the right thing here tonight, and that is to give a up vote for this project and stop letting the tail wag the dog in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Atkins. Anyone else? Hopefully, we're wrapping this up. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. There's been a lot of conversation going on about this, and a lot of people reference the comprehensive plan, but also, a lot of people are expressing fear that development is going to come to this county and it's going to be overrun and horrible. And I want to tell people, our comprehensive plan has done us in good stead for decades, not centuries, too bad. So it's kept the development in and around the villages, okay? And you've had landowners, a lot of you people haven't been in this room before, so I've said this to too many people, so if I repeat myself, I apologize, sort of. It's just, we have landowners who have put a lot of huge hundreds and thousands of acres into conservation easements, so that has preserved huge swaths of this county, and that's why you see the wide-open spaces. That's why you see the wide-open spaces. 20% of this county is done by landowners who, for years, have been putting, have sacrificed that they could have made lots of money and sold out, but they decided they wanted to preserve this county forever. My late husband was one of them. We have over 1,000 acres. We have this preserved for over 25 years, and we've been joined by many, many people. That has helped to focus the growth into the villages. The other thing, I really don't like the word "subdivision," because it really sounds like, oh, my gosh, the developers are coming. This is a parcel of farmland that Mr. Taylor could keep and just make hay out of. However, he can also then just strictly have five acres and sell those instead of the two acres. He has a good heart, it seems to me. I don't really know him, but he wanted to be able to provide some less expensive housing than the $500,000 homes on these huge parcels for people here. And I think that would be a good thing. Either way, he's going to win, because he's going to be able to have his property to have five-acre homes. And so think about it, if we want to have homes for people who want to have families here, want to keep children here, children are our future. We need children to replace all the gray-haired people who are dying and are not going to be able to keep going on this county. You're going to end up with a bunch of people who have huge acres of things, and nobody living here except rich people with hired help in the houses. So this is something that's very important that needs to be done. The five acres, think about it, instead of 13, you could have five-acre homes, and then huge homes on those with an apartment above the garage, which seems to be fine. You could market it to a very wealthy exclusive part and say Sperryville is the upcoming part of the world, Rappahannock County, and so you will have buyers for that. So you're still going to have five, and say five of those have four apartments up above the garage, you're still going to have a bunch more people that you're going to have anyway. So, and as far as the gateway, when you're coming down the road, you're coming down 211, what's the first thing you see? You see shaws, you have cars, you know, junk cars and all that repair shop. You go a little bit further, and you see houses, places that are being redone, refurbished, which is great. You go a little bit further, and you see a motel that's been into apartments. So it's not this grand expanse of beautifulness until you get past that specific part of Sperryville. Okay? So I hope this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. All right, one more. One more. Sorry. And we've got people online.
Hi, my name is Claire Callit. I live in the Hampton District. I also work at the Piedmont Environmental Council and have a letter that I'm just going to highlight a few points from, that I sent on May 11th on behalf of PEC. One of the, you know, issues we've heard repeatedly is that this current rezoning application is not consistent with the current zoning, and that in turn is not consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. That was just updated in December 2020. In this section of the comprehensive plan, I'm just going to read aloud, it says that the comprehensive plan envisions and encourages future residential It says that the comprehensive plan envisions and encourages future residential and commercial development be focused in and around the major villages consistent, and this is the important part, with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations. The undeveloped potential of the current zoning designations. When we look at Woodard Road, there are no R2 lots. There are rural residential five lots, and there are larger lots. Across the street from the Mount Airy Field, property is a property that's held in conservation easement for nearly thirty years. There's also adjacent, the Village of Sperryville, that is a historic district. There's a scenic road, Sperryville's Main Street, that runs very much at the threshold of this Woodard Road potential community. So, PEC has carefully reviewed this rezoning application, and, you know, we have just, you know, expressed our concern that this would be an example of how medium-scale development can happen at the edges of villages, and this would be an example for others beyond Sperryville in the county. And this will signal to those that want to seek to change their existing zoning in the villages of the communities of Rappahannock, and will increase density, and that will be beyond the existing patterns of zoning despite the, the potential impacts to the communities at large here. So, I thank you for your time. I hope you have a chance to read the full letter, but I do think most of the residents that have spoken tonight have, have really elaborated on a lot of these very good points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
How about, yes, sir. And we are keeping time, so please.
My name's Robin Day, live in Sperryville, Piedmont District. Leave at 1023 Woodward Road, one lot in from the intersection with Main Street. I have lived at this address for thirty-six years. The road is only fifteen feet wide in front of my house, and that house is set only nine feet from that right away. I have many reasons to oppose this change in the zoning, but I'm only gonna speak of one, but I may change my mind and let others address the many others. Woodward Road and the intersection with Main Street is too narrow to handle any added traffic. In fact, calling Woodward a road is incorrect. As Pete Estes once told me, "It's not a road, it's a lane, it's a farm lane." It was built to handle horse-drawn wagons and buggy traffic, which pass safely each other at their four to five miles an hour. Cars today travel this road at 25, 35, and 40 miles an hour, which creates a dangerous situation. Exiting Woodward on the main is when another vehicle is entering, and perhaps the restaurant parking is full, can be a very dicey situation. As is backing out of my drive, which requires all of that fifteen-foot right-of-way to turn, and the idea of meeting another car is quite daunting. Over these thirty-six years, I have watched traffic increase and witnessed vehicles traveling much too fast. I fear one day finding one of them in my living room. As it is, I have seen tire tracks crossing my front lawn merely a couple of feet from the front stoop. This road cannot handle a hundred-plus extra vehicles a day. There is no locked-in contractual assurance that all traffic will be diverted across a VDOT-approved bridge to 211, or that a future lot owner might decide to build their own driveway out onto 600. Now, I heard Mr. Brown say that there's possibility of blocking access to 600, but then he turns right around and says, "But, you know, we're gonna put a road that goes right through from 600 to 211." Well, what's the use of doing that? I mean, that's, sort of changes that whole plan. So, what I'm asking you is to keep the zoning exactly as it is. It's the proper use of that property, five acres is right, and who's to say the size of house? People say small lot, small house, big house, big lot. That's not true, we all know that. I mean, we see monstrous houses built on half acres, you know, so that means nothing. I mean, someone could buy five acres and put a 3,000-square-foot house, and we don't love it. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
My name's Henry Garfine, I live in Washington, the town, but I don't live in a private house. I live in the town apartments. I'm not necessarily here, I don't really wanna talk about this specific application because, quite frankly, I don't know that much about it. What I do wanna talk about is what I hear from people in the audience, reading newspapers, whatnot, that there's plenty of housing around for other people, for older people, and that's a complete myth. There is no place in this county for older people. I've been going to lunch with guys for years, and it's always been a discussion, where are you gonna put the older people? I, myself, had a farm in Harris Hollow, I was your neighbor, I was Alex's neighbor. When I sold, my wife passed away, she, we were good citizens. She served on the school board for eight years. We paid our taxes, and yet, when I sold the farm, I had nowhere to live. I had nowhere to go. I mean, I had, you know, I wanted to stay in the county, but I had nowhere to go in this county 'cause there's no available housing. And if it wasn't for Mr. H. Black here, who lived in the Washington apartments, and he bought a house, I moved into his apartment. That's how I got the apartment. And then I hear, well, buy up old houses and, and, and refurbish them, and then you can let people of need move in there. And I ask, what happens to people that are already living there? What do you do with them? And it, it, it breaks my heart, I went to a meeting on Monday, the town meeting of, on the new development there, and one woman got up and said, "Well, all the old people go to Culpeper." Now, what if you don't wanna go to Culpeper? You wanna stay here. So, I, I just wish this talk of, off the top of the head, of people keep saying there's plenty of housing and affordable housing around here, it's a myth. There is not affordable housing for people in my income unless I live in an apartment. You know, this, it just doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a hand back here. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bob Trafton, and I live in the Piedmont District. My wife and I live on Woodward Road in Sperryville. The road, as you know, is, is really extremely narrow, almost a farm lane, and very difficult in places to pass. The road itself is, comes within feet of our house. Every vehicle that passes by, we know it, we feel it. Understandably, we have concerns with increased traffic. We also have additional concerns related to safety, water, sewer, increased pressure on the public services, harming the scenic view and the precedent this upzoning could set in the county. Some of these items I've outlined in a letter that I sent you earlier this week. I wanted to say to you directly that the existing RR5 zoning of this parcel is entirely appropriate for its location around the village. It's located between the areas of residential village RV, HC, commercial highway, CV, commercial village, and on the other side, A, agriculture. This is the perfect intermediary between those uses. The current RR5 zoning is in keeping with the 11-1 2004 and the 12-7 2020 comprehensive plan. And in the, if I cite the 2020 comprehensive plan, Chapter 7, talking about future land use in the title section, section titled Residential Development, page 96, if you care to look. It states, "Medium-density development should continue to be focused in and around the county's villages." It defines medium-density development, one dwelling unit per one to five acres in and around the existing village areas in residential village, residential, rural residential zoning districts. The existing zoning of this parcel, the RR5, it meets that criteria. In my opinion, there is not a compelling justification to upzone this parcel. So, I'll just leave you with a thought. This, this board asked Mike Chandler, a zoning expert, to speak to them and, and the public on May 24th at your meeting. He basically talked about the origins of zoning going from Babylon to today. But one of the documents Mike, Mike presented was called Making Planning Commission Decisions: Points to Ponder. It's this document, it was posted on Board Docs. One of the, on page 11, item 7, it states the following. "A denied upzoning is lawful if it is fairly debatable and is found that the existing zoning is reasonable, even if the proposed zoning is also reasonable."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I see you there.
Hi, I'm Lesley Arnold, I'm from Piedmont District. Mr. Taylor bases his application on the provision of affordable housing for Rappahannock residents. In a revised concept plan sent to the Board of Supervisors recently, he provides pictures of possible houses with possible affordable prices and possible roads designed to avoid clogging up Woodward Road by sending traffic directly to Route 211. However, he doesn't provide profits to lock in these affordable plans. He doesn't have VDOT approval to route traffic onto 211, and there's no certainty that the sewer system will support 13 new houses. The concept plan with no profits is perhaps explained by the possibility that Mr. Taylor isn't planning to develop the subdivision himself. Perhaps he plans to sell it for others to develop. If that is indeed the case, his concept plan is just that. Absent a wealthy philanthropist to subsidize the subdivision for really affordable housing, the property is likely to fall prey to developers looking for a fat profit or out-of-towners looking for second homes. With no profits on the property, neither a developer nor a bunch of out-of-towners could be counted on to pursue the idea of affordable housing or to consider the sensitivities of the Village of Sperryville and its surrounds. Perhaps when Mr. Taylor can, can apply with profits for a subdivision, he can, he can reapply for rezoning. In the meantime, I suggest that the application be denied with the rezoning, with the zoning to remain RR5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sally Haynes of Piedmont District, and I'm gonna depart from what I expected to say just to respond to a couple of things I've heard tonight. One, I don't believe that building more homes in the village will actually prevent people who own large acreage from dividing that into 25-acre lots so they can build a house. It just sounds good, but I don't think that works. I don't think it's gonna depress those landowners' desire to develop their property to the extent that they can. Another thing is, I think that the Washington School is a wonderful example of probably affordable housing, and it'd be great if we had more things that we could redevelop as that was done. And, and really, multifamily housing generally is going to be more readily developed into something affordable than new construction, single-family housing. And council expressed real urgency to build affordable housing, but the applicant talked of developing in ten years or fifty years, which is hardly a timeline that would be a solution to what we think is an urgent need. When this application was filed months ago, a couple of us said, "What's this?" As time went by, more and more people noticed the application, questioned the intent, thought about the impacts, and concluded it's not a good deal for Sperryville or the county. The Sperryville Coalition Against Res zoning was born out of this growing awareness by a growing population. The application may actually be a turning point for Rappahannock, a time to step back and be sure that we fully appreciate not just the pitfalls of rezoning, but the opportunities presented by rezoning. You can, you have a lot of discretion with a rezoning request, and you can exercise that discretion to achieve the community's vision. We've all learned a lot about rezoning over the past few months. We've been, we've become students of the Albemarle Handbook. And one of the things we learned is what I think Bob has just said. If the existing zoning is reasonable, a court will uphold the county's decision to keep that zoning, even if the requested zoning change is also arguably reasonable. I heard one person comment, "A man should have the right to do what he wants with his land." If that were true, there would be no need for a comprehensive plan, no need for a planning commission, or a rezoning process. These exist specifically to protect and preserve and generate what we as a community consider important and hold dear. Someone else said, "There's no choice on this application. This property is in and around the village, and it's correct and it's proper that development should be in and around the villages." However, that doesn't mean just anything.
Miss Haynes, sorry, your time's up.
It is?
Yep.
Thank you.
I apologize. Three minutes is quick.
Hi, my name is Daphne Hutchinson, and I live in Jackson District, but I know a lot more. I wrote all of you guys, so I won't cover all of that. But I was here for the Sperryville sewer system. I know how close the village came to being condemned. There wasn't a single well, a single well in Sperryville that met Health Department standards. They weren't all contaminated with fecal coliform, but they didn't meet Health Department standards. Every septic field malfunctioned. We were the number five health hazard in Virginia. That was one of the main reasons why we got 100% close to federal and state funding for that sewer system, because the county said, "Your problem, Sperryville." Yes, it's not an incorporated village and doesn't have, but it was your problem. You had to pay for it. And the, the problem was first documented in 1954. 1954. There were pit privies with pipes going directly to that river. I saw toilet paper in that river. And we have a sewer system that was funded, built, designed, and promoted as no-growth. In Water Sewer Authority meetings, Planning Commission meetings, Board of Supervisor meetings, if I heard no-growth one time, I heard it 100 times. It was not intended to do anything more than solve the existing problem and allow for some reasonable growth. I apologize for not knowing the terms of our contract with Remington for the septic. But I was also here when we had a contract with Culpeper for trash, and we had no landfill. Until, and then one day, Culpeper said, "We're done, we're done. Only our trash, we don't take your trash." And I was here for the crisis, the furor, and the rush to find a solution. And, you know, with the Sperryville sewer, it's not just the visit of the Village of Sperryville. Talk to Cliff Miller, he'll tell you about the cows that aborted. Is everybody downstream from that village if we make a mistake and don't do it right? And no disrespect to the Water and Sewer Authority, and especially not to you. You're a community servant, but you are not an expert. It was built as a no-growth system. You're saying plenty, there's plenty of room for, plenty of room for it, but we don't know. We don't know that, we don't know that whether there's infill or outflow. So, you need more information.
My name is Yoko Barsky. I live in Hampton District. Listening to all this, and I would like to bring up some technical aspect here. This application came in last year sometime October, November, something like that, right?
October 28.
Pardon?
October 28.
October 28. So it was on the November meeting. So we've been dealing with this for the past eight months, seven, eight months. When the time passes by, there are a lot of talks, discussions, speculations, fears, all kinds of things happen, and the program gets even bigger than it actually is. And during that time, the only thing that you've got is that new information on the conceptual subdivision plan and a letter from Mr. Brown. To me, that kind of information needs to be included with the application. Either zoning administrator should request that, or the planning commission, the initial review meeting, that's when these things need to be requested, so you have a better idea of what might be happening. Right now, you should have a lot more information, including the sewer, the more detailed drawings of where the houses will be built. If the owner under Mr. Brown promised that's going to be only a single story, they need to build the houses, because that's going to be on the slope. And the pictures on this information show either the garage underneath or the bonus room above the garage, et cetera. It's easy to do on the slope. Another thing on this road, just looking at this conceptual plan, part of the road seems very steep. Woodward Road is pretty steep in one place, and this little section looks, at least on the drawing, seems to me twice as steep as the Woodward Road, the steep part of the Woodward Road. So none of these details need to be presented to you before you can really make a correct decision or accept these things. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't see any more hands. Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Pierce, Piedmont. And I find this a really interesting discussion, and I hope that everybody really thinks about it. I appreciate Mr. Taylor, and I understand why he would want to do what he wants to do. And to be honest, I spent 10 years of my life on the Planning Commission, and I've got fingerprints on some of our documents also. And when I first heard about this, I was like, "Well, you know, yeah, it's, I mean, just quick, off the top of my head, yeah, it's around the village. That's, you know, that's where we want the growth." Got that. But there's no harm in not rezoning this that I can see. There are a couple of things that I've heard back in, I think it was 1996. Okay, the water. Everybody lives in Sperryville or knows, people who live in Sperryville, knows the water can be pretty poor. The Planning Commission paid for a water study, and I think it was '96, by NSAT. And what this study said was that, yeah, there's water here, but it moves through. It's not captured. There's no aquafar. We had two, there are two studies afterwards, which were both commissioned by private people. And so, you know, hey, who's paying the bill gets a little bit of attention. So I just wanted to say that. I also found it very confusing about the sewer. I've been in this county for 35 years, and for 35 years, I've never been able to get a handle on what the capacity of the sewer is. We talk to some people, we got plenty of capacity to talk to other people, we don't. And I personally appreciate what Daphne said, because that filled in a lot of the blanks. There's no harm in not rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Good evening, members of the board. David Conick from Stonewall Hawthorne District. I guess all the lawyers have to get up and say, "I'm not getting paid to say this." So I'm not getting paid to say this. What I want to talk about is not this particular application, because as you know, I was on the Planning Commission when it came up, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment any more than I did back in December, when it came to us for public hearing. But I do want to call the board's attention to a couple of things, and it's things that most people in the audience have alluded to in one way or another. The first thing is the inadequacy of our subdivision and zoning ordinance in that it doesn't require some information like a site plan, like a layout of the plat, or the plat, or proposed plat, when somebody applies for a subdivision. Why? Because it was written in 19, pretty much, '62. It was updated subsequently, but basically, what's in there is the same provisions that we copied from 50 or 60 years ago. It's outdated, and it needs to be updated. So that will provide this information, and that will be a basis for the board to make decisions like this. Second, I want to talk about the maps. I've been crusading, I guess, for the comprehensive plan to have maps in it. That's what the statute says or suggests. They don't have to. It says "including but not limited to." I understand that. But we worked last year from February until July, and we went through about four or five different iterations of village maps to cure this problem that you're dealing with tonight. And I don't envy of the decision that you've got to make now, because you don't have a map. If you did have the map, the map we recommended, or some other map of the villages, you could look at it and say, "This property is in the area that is designated for this kind of development and growth or rezoning," or it's not. And that would be, make your decision, or some future board's decision on a similar issue, so much easier if you had a map. People objected to the maps. I really don't understand their objections. They said the maps needed to be fixed. What has happened since you took the maps out in December? The answer is, nothing. There hasn't been any action to fix the maps. So I'm going to suggest to you that not just because of this case, this case is going to be over tonight, for the most part, but there's going to be future cases. There's going to be cases in Flint Hill. There's going to be cases around Little Washington. There's going to be applications in Flint Hill and Amosville and all over the county, sooner or later, similar to this or worse. And if we don't have village maps that we can rely on, you're going to have this problem come up over and over and over again. So that's what I urge you to do, is get back to work on the village maps. Thank you very much.
We have quite a few people on Zoom. I need to give them a chance to speak as well. Anyone listening on Zoom, if you would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. I think the instructions are there, and we'll call on you. We are limiting the public speaking to three minutes.
There was a hand raised earlier, but I didn't see it. There we go.
There we go.
Ashley, would you start again, please?
Ashley Matthews, Piedmont District, for about a mile and a half from the site. Just reiterating many points that have been made tonight, like my friend said, definitely evaluating this application on its merits. And me, my husband and I, very much feel that the merits fall short to justify rezoning. The detriment to the character surrounding the village does not justify the rezoning. Like Sharon Pierce said, there is no harm in staying the course and respecting the zoning that has been very thoughtfully sought out for a very long time. So my husband and I very much urge you to deny the application.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone? All right. Not seeing anyone on the screen. I will close the public comment period of this public hearing. And that brings us into board discussion. I'm wondering if we might want a quick recess. Sorry, but this has obviously been a long comment period, so give us five minutes. We'll be right back. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the break. Ms. Smith, we have heard a bunch of comments.
We did. We did. And I know, I just wanted to review some of the issues, not issues, or challenges of the meeting tonight. We did somehow end up with eight public hearings on our schedule for this evening, which is a less-than-optimal format for reviewing something like this that obviously has a lot of public interest and should take a lot of care in reviewing and making findings and having a discussion and having time to process all the public comments this evening and do all the things that I really feel we should do as a board in our due diligence in reviewing this application. We're challenged to do that tonight. We have immediately following this public hearing, two joint public hearings with the Planning Commission scheduled. It's 9 o'clock, 9:15. We're two and a quarter hours in, and really, as a body, a public body, doing business during public hours, we should try to conclude our business by 11 o'clock this evening. And so I just want you all to understand that that is where I'm coming from, and I've heard a lot tonight about really having a good public exchange, a robust exchange of opinions, time to really work this through, and time to come to the right conclusions. And I agree, and I agree that that was done well with the comprehensive plan, and one of the mottos of my life is anything worth doing is worth doing well. And so I would like to hear from my fellow board members, but if it should please the other members of the board, I would like time to process everything we've heard this evening, review some of the things we've heard this evening, review them in context of the findings for the Code of Virginia 15.2-2284, as detailed in the Albemarle Land Use Guide 10-300, and come back and have further discussion together at a later date and time certain. But I'm open to input from the other members of the board.
I do believe the clock got away with a lot of very positive and information that we needed to hear from everyone, so I really appreciate that everyone did that. But I too agree that we do have a couple of items that follow that will take a considerable amount of time as well, and if the board would agree, we could set a date and time to continue this discussion.
And I would like to add, I just really would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I think it's a great thing that we could disagree and sit together and have a very civil discourse about how we feel about the application and realize, you know, the benefits and, you know, some of the drawbacks, and we threw that together to make those observations in a very civil atmosphere and have a really great public discourse about it, I think, is the cornerstone of everything we do. And I really want to thank everyone for coming out, one side or the other. And I just really appreciate all the input that we received. I think it was a very constructive meeting.
Sorry. No, there was a wasp, but, sorry. I missed it.
But I'll defer to the other members of the board and how you feel about following through this evening.
Yeah, I want to just extend my appreciation to the Taylor family and then all the people who came out and spoke. And I will say, I also appreciate the members of the Planning Commission, who've been sitting here reliving all the work that they did previously on the application. And they're here, I think, because they wanted to hear it all over again, but really, they're here because they have to be here for a joint meeting, so we do need to get to that. And so I certainly would support such an administrative decision to continue this to a later date, and just want to make sure that we're all clear on what our deadline is to make a decision on the rezoning application.
What I would like to recommend, I was given a document that says that if a hearing is commenced but cannot be completed for any reason, the hearing may be recessed to be resumed at another time and place without the necessity for any further notice, provided the next time and place is announced when the hearing is recessed. I do know that we're all together on Monday, the 19th, as a different body, but we can come together after that meeting as the Board of Supervisors if that is something we all agree to.
Sounds reasonable to me, acceptable to everyone else.
I'm in favor of that. We've got quite a bit of work ahead of us to try to make a proper decision tonight.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
I'll put that in the form of a motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
We reconvene on, we recessed this part of the public hearing and reconvene on 19 July.
The first meeting's at 5:30. 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock.
PM or AM?
PM. He's a stickler.
It'll have to be PM. Anyone that knows me recently knows that it will not be AM.
All right, PM in the courthouse.
PM.
In the courthouse, here at 250 Gates Street, Washington, Virginia.
And that was a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, so much.
I mean, stick around. It's going to get good now.
We're just getting, rolling, getting started.
You're obligated, you've got to stay.
Everyone's leaving. Back, back. Yeah. How you doing?
Yeah.
There we go.
Mr. Woodson, I think you're next.
Okay, just, let's give it three more seconds here.
Yep.
You didn't have to stick her. I mean, this is...
They have to stay.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, as you know, this year I'm serving as the chairperson of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, so as you know, we have scheduled tonight a joint meeting with the Planning Commission with respect to zoning ordinance changes, both of which were under preliminary review by the Planning Commission at its prior regular meeting. And I will now, in advance of our public hearings on the same, will call to order a meeting of the Planning Commission- a meeting of the Planning Commission noting, again with great appreciation, that Mr. Sharp, Mr. Shul, and Ms. Ishii, Mr. Kohler, Mr. Light, and Mr. Henry are all here. So, all members of the Planning Commission are present, and I will call that meeting to order. You can sit, if you want, sit wherever you're comfortable, I think.
This is yours at the moment?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
So, our first, our first joint public hearing with the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors is an amendment to Chapter 170 of the zoning ordinance regarding short towers for broadband and public safety use. And just as a reminder, at our last regular meeting of the Planning Commission, we did have a preliminary review of a draft ordinance. Certain changes were made by members of the Planning Commission at that time, and that's the draft that's before us tonight. And I think to work sequentially and make the best use of both the Planning Commission members and members of the Board of Supervisors, before we open the public hearing on the short tower ordinance, I'd like to do two things. Number one, I wonder, Mr. Curry, if you could just give us a quick review of where we stand with respect to the draft, just a high-level overview. That's the first thing. And then, the second, what I would like to do is just hear brief comments from members of the Planning Commission prior to the commencement of the public hearing. And I think it would be appropriate then also to hear any brief comments from members of the Board of Supervisors. And I just noticed Michelle Summers is there. So, if, I didn't mean to put that on you, Gary, I just didn't see Michelle. So, if you want.
That's fine. We'll do this quickly.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, just procedurally, for the Planning Commission members, one thing to remember is that our job as Planning Commission members tonight is to provide to the Board of Supervisors, as awkward as that seems considering we're all in the same room, a recommendation for approval or denial of the draft ordinance. So, again, we had a preliminary review, and tonight, at the conclusion of the public hearing, the members of Planning Commission will need to determine what their recommendation is to the Board of Supervisors. And we're going to start, again, with the short tower draft ordinance, and then subsequently the separate public hearing on the proposed ordinance language for renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. As put up on the screen, the, this public hearing was noticed pursuant to Code of Virginia 15.2-2204, letting the public know that the joint bodies would be considering mending the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, to consider adding a new category of telecommunications tower that would be approvable administratively rather than through a public hearing process that results in changes to Sections 170-108.2, 108.6, 108.17, and 108-12A, as well as eliminating Section 170-112B, which was a prior complete exemption for short wooden poles. By short, the draft ordinance identifies the height of 80 feet or less would be allowed to use as provision. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment is included with the meeting materials and very, specifically identifies the red line strikeout, or in this case, yellow, black, of the changes. Adding the Category 5 facilities is defined to be those that are for broadband and public safety that are less than 80 feet and meeting certain requirements, as well as the very specific permitting requirements that one would have to meet in order to get this administrative permit instead of going through a public hearing process. The documents have been available for review since the public hearing was advertised, and they've been on your board doc site since the agenda's been active.
Thank you for that introduction. And I want to thank the members of the Planning Commission for working through the draft ordinance at our last meeting in some detail. As I stated, at that time, from an internet connectivity standpoint, I do believe that this ordinance is drafted is one that I think makes good sense for incremental progress toward some kind of broader solution for broadband in the county. So, with that, I would just open the floor to the members of the Planning Commission if anyone has anything that they want to add or discuss regarding the draft that we reviewed last month. And then, perhaps, Ms. Donahue, you could turn that over to the Board of Supervisors for a comment.
Excellent.
Any, any members of the Planning Commission wish to make any comments on, on the draft ordinance that's before us? If you could just raise your hand, you don't need to state your voting district because we know who you are.
I don't know if you can handle your laptop and microphone.
I don't have a laptop, I don't think.
Okay. Yeah.
So, it's different being on this side.
Yeah.
I don't know who I should address my comments to, to the Planning Commissioner or to you, but I'll look at you while I do so. So, I very much appreciate, as I think I've said before, the Broadbent Authority, which is you, our board, for the work you've put in, not only on this ordinance change as well as Mr. Curry and Ms. Summers, but the work you're doing in general to address this really real problem in our county for the need for broadband. We don't have payphones anymore, and, you know, we all communicate by, by cellphones and internet. And so, we all appreciate that need. I'm less, less certain about what this particular language accomplishes for us in terms of that need. And I may have this wrong, so I look forward to stand, being corrected if I have this wrong. But first of all, I will say that this, what we have, as you said, Gary, what we have right now is in an exemption in 170-12 for wooden towers put up, you know, like Piedmont Broadbent or whatever, that are 80 feet tall, but they have to be either on a, on a utility pole or on a wooden tower like a tree. And I, as I understand it, well, so first of all, that's exempted from our entire Chapter 170, our entire zoning ordinance, as I recall. As I understand, what we were, the Broadbent Authority was trying to accomplish was to, as you say, Mr. Woodson, to make incremental steps toward making it more accessible for providers. But specifically, this language was to assist Piedmont Broadbent and similar providers because they said they needed lattice towers. So, and then in addition, it was in case folks needed, you know, to make it easier to put other towers up, not just for Piedmont Broadbent. But what this particular change does is it creates a new category of facilities within our telecommunications code, so ordinance, so that this is actually part of the telecommunications ordinance as opposed to the current exemption, which is outside of that. That has a couple of implications, but what you've done is you've made this be a, instead of being a special exception permit like our current telecommunications towers are, except for the exempting portion, this would just be an administrative approval. And so, what an administrative approval means is Ms. Summers just takes whatever we've written down on the ordinance, check, 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 and there's no public hearing, no comparison to the comprehensive plan, no public input, hey, this, this impacts my next-door neighbor or what. There's none of that. This is just a, what they call ministerial act. So, I think that's actually a fairly big change in and of itself, and one that ought to be considered. The other things that, there are a number of other issues that come up with this. Another one is that there are some drafting issues associated with this. For example, because this is within our telecommunications ordinance, it uses the term wireless facilities, what is the term, personal wireless facilities. And just as an example of some of the drafting concerns, personal wireless facilities is a defined term in our telecommunications ordinance, and it includes cables, conduits, antennas, whatever, as well as buildings. So, the way this is drafted, which I know is not intended, we could have 80-foot buildings under this for administrative review. So, there are just a couple of drafting issues in there as well. But there are also some very specific things that I, that do raise concerns for me in terms of exempting all of these. Under the current exemption that we have right now, it is an exemption, but it's for the benefit, that tower has to be, and the, and the broadband use has to be for the benefit of the subscriber on, on whose property this is located. That would not be the case with these Category 5 facilities. So, that opens an entire whole door that's, that's now closed. And so, as I understand it, or as I'm thinking it through, it seems to me you could, you could line 80-foot towers along all of 522 with just an administrative review. Now, are the economics here for that? I have no idea. But one thing that I do note is that when I listen to the Broadbent Authority meeting, and again, maybe I didn't get this right, is that we had hoped for this to help providers such as Piedmont Broadbent, but some of the providers were thinking of potentially partnering, partnering with when you get your RFI back, have indicated that this may not be a provision that's helpful to them necessarily at all. And yet, it opens up doors to things that may have unintended consequences, in my opinion it might. I'm going to hand out to, to Planning Commission members and the board, I have copies if you want to see it as well. These are just some of the. I don't, I don't know if board members want a copy of this or not. You can just see for convenience if you would. Simply, I went through our current telecommunications ordinance to, what, what Mr. Curry has done at the Broadbent Authority's request, as I understand it, is to try to make this administrative review as, as clean as possible without having to pull in necessarily a bunch of the requirements we have around other towers under our current telecommunications ordinance. But it seems to me that there are a lot of things therefore that don't apply to these 80-foot towers that we might want to think about a little bit. First of all, just, just, I'll pull out a few, you can read as well as I can speak. But under, for other towers, for example, the county has the right to come in and inspect the facility. We would not have, at least that's pulled out of this. We, they have to identify the county against claims arising from its facilities. That's not required for these. They have to pay costs and fees necessary to ensure compliance with the permit. We have to, they have to allow the county and state police to co-locate. You can go through, there's a whole number of these. But certainly, there is requirements that it be consistent with the comprehensive plan. We oppose standards for compatibility with surroundings as to color, topography, materials, and architecture, and on, and on, and on. You can, you can read this. But I just, I just think that it may be something that we might want to take a little step back and think through a little bit more as to whether this is going to get us where we want to go. That, that is my concern.
Thanks very much. Other members of the Planning Commission, you want to comment briefly before members of Board of Supervisors do we commence the, the public hearing? Mr. Henry?
Yes. I commend the board on putting this ordinance in form that we received in our review. I think you all took the initiative after years of broadband committee work to recognize we do have a problem, we need to simplify it, we deal with carriers, providers, and other locations where they, they have, those communities have recognized we need these facilities in, and that these facilities cannot go through an extended review period of months and months and months to get something done. And I'm from Shenandoah County originally, and God bless Chantel. You know, they were formed in Shenandoah County back when phones first came in. And it was a mutual phone company. You had to buy their stock, $5 to get phone service. And they expanded out over the years. And they serve a lot of communities, but they really have done a lot for Shenandoah County. I don't think there's any part of Shenandoah County that doesn't have service. And, and I think if we want to have service over here, we, I don't think we're giving up anything. And we use 80-foot poles, wood poles, don't work. We have to get up from the hills, ridges, we've got to try to get there with wood poles, you have to build bridges, take care of your equipment, trow, these kind of issues. Metal poles they have, they have a stack on top of each other, it's pretty simple to wreck the tower, pretty simple to take it down. And if you want to get anything accomplished in a timely manner, I think we have to follow the footprint that you all have in front of you now.
Thanks a lot. Any other Planning Commission members wishing to make brief remarks? Yeah, Mr. Light. And if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone, just so that we have a clear record of. Thank you. Mr. Henry speaks really loudly, so I didn't.
Thank you. If I knew I had to come to the mic, I might not have spoken. But, but I just want to say, I do think Ms. Ishii raises some concerns, but this is a case where we do have a compelling need. I think the questions are really about how many of these are going to, are going to occur under this rule, and are they really going to be visually not impactful? There's a little bit of a faith, a good faith effort there. So, but my, my rationale for being able to support this is the idea that we can revisit this. This is something that we will inevitably see the results of, and we will be able to tell if there is, you know, an unintended proliferation of these things. It's, it's not ideal. I do share some of those concerns, but my hope would be that we could monitor this closely and address any of those concerns as they come up. So, I would just add that.
Very well said. Thank you. Other comments from members of the Planning Commission? Ms. Donahue? Oh, Mr. Kohler, I'm sorry. Another booming voice, you probably not.
Boomer. Baby boomer. The, I like some of the things that Ms. Ishii has in here. I can also agree with Mr. Light that, you know, we have a need, and perhaps we can address some of these. I'm torn basically because I think we do want to provide, or at least begin providing some service for people. So, I think I can support it. I would like to see some of these things addressed, and I don't know how we can do that at this time, though, in this hearing. So, that's, I think it's a catch-22.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, you do raise an important point. We did have a draft ordinance that was publicly advertised, so we do have to be careful about significant revisions to that. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on the Planning Commission wishing to comment? Mr. Shulyn? Okay.
And I just have one quick thing that I forgot. You invited Mike.
Yep.
I'll yell.
So, as, as I think most of you probably are aware, the state code does give a requirement that localities throughout Virginia have administrative review provisions instead of a public hearing, not a special exception, in other words, for 50-foot tall towers. And that is by state code, and actually, our code is, I think, not, I'm not sure if we're in compliance with that right at the moment. But, but I don't, I'm not aware of another jurisdiction in Virginia that has an exemption like this for 80-foot towers. I know that Albemarle County does encourage, and I've often thought it would be a good idea for Rappahannock County also to encourage more smaller towers rather than fewer really big towers. But the way Albemarle County and many other jurisdictions do it is they impose some pretty stringent screening requirements for those towers. So, you may have more of them, but they're well screened. For example, I'm not going to get this quite right. I believe Albemarle County's requirement is that for any, you can't have any tree within, I'm going to guess 100 yards, I have 500 yards, I can't remember, that's more than 10, 10 feet, that it can't be 10 feet taller than any trees within a certain radius. And you have to have a tree conservation plan, and you have to have it certified by an arborist. And so, they have a number of, of screening requirements. You're required to maintain the screening, the landscaping, et cetera. So, we are not imposing anything like that on this. We're just saying, go for it. So, anyway, those are, I, I think I, Rappahannock County has been one of the more conservative, if you will, on protecting our scenic resources. This is going to put us way out there as one of the less, the lesser protected ones, certainly on these. So, just to point that out.
Great. Thanks a lot. Anyone else on the Planning Commission wishing to comment? Okay. Ms. Donahue, I'll turn it over to the Board of Supervisors and for you to lead that discussion if you wish, and I will exit that discussion.
Board members, I don't know if you want to speak individually, if you've got any questions for what we just heard, or on what we just heard.
Of course, you could do that before or after the public, public has an opportunity. Can you open and close the public hearing?
Let's open the public hearing, because I think we want to hear from the public first. Anybody wishing to speak on this particular issue, towers? Yes, ma'am. And we're going to do two minutes on this one, so.
I only need one minute.
Good.
Diane Bruce, Sperryville. I don't know enough about this to.
I don't know enough about this to make any comment, but I do worry about things just like administrative approval. I think that's an awful lot to throw at our zoning administrator. I would like to see you proceed carefully. There's so many things that I'm hearing tonight about what's not in it, how we just kind of fly off and go do this. I can't help but think about in the old days when we had the first satellite tower, a satellite disc. You know, they were, what, six feet across?
Eight.
Eight. And every house in West Virginia had one, and they were called the West Virginia State Flower.
Yep.
You know, I would hate to see all of these towers popping up without some kind of more definitive control, and I don't know what it is. But I also like everything I ever learned about the Albemarle County handbook and the way they do things. Thank you.
I'm not getting paid to say anything. One thing that I would like to suggest that you consider before you adopt this, there's a kind of a parallel in the state code that allows, it's like a county option thing where for variances, that they can be administratively approved. But again, it's a local option thing. I think that was proposed, and then it wasn't adopted. But one of the things that's in there that might be appropriate for this, that would ameliorate some of these concerns, is a provision where somebody can appeal the zoning administrator's decision within 30 days or whatever the time period is, if there's something in there that affects the neighborhood or adjoining landowners or something like that. I think everybody, as has been said by Mr. Light and Mr. Henry, that probably these are not going to be offensive and so forth and so on. But if they are, that kind of a provision that would be very similar, and you could just pretty much cut that out and paste it in here, where a neighbor or adjoining landowner or somebody in the view shed, however you want to make it, could, you know, appeal the decision within 30 days once the administrative approval had been given. And a corresponding provision should be that before the zoning administrator approves one of these, that some kind of notice has to be given to adjoining landowners or people, you can do it however you want. It's adjoining landowners or people within a certain distance based on the tax map would have to be notified that this has been applied for. You could make it two weeks or 10 days or whatever you want to do, but they'd have to send out a notice to all those affected immediately adjoining landowners so that they could come review it and make their objections known and so forth, because that way there would be a way for some input. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. Anyone on...oops, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Margaret Bond, Piedmont District. As some of you know, I've had a little bit of experience considering broadband networks and the requirements for the architecture to provide the speeds and the service that this county needs. So both in broadband committee, and I've had the pleasure of following the broadband authority and its progress towards this goal. I appreciate Ms. Ishi's and Mr. Kohler's comments that it's sort of like, ooh, do we know what we're getting into? We're not sure. Could this mean too many towers and so forth? And it occurred to me, as I considered some of those same issues, that it might be, and this is going to sound facetious, that the matter not be voted on tonight, but for the broadband authority to have the opportunity to consider this, consider it in light of some RFIs which are going to be coming in very soon. And it might give the broadband authority and ultimately the board of supervisors a better idea of what kind of architecture the county really is looking at to be able to achieve the broadband speeds it wants to. Does it look as though the consensus of the respondents to the RFIs is that we're going to have, you know, 65 to 80-foot towers all over the county? Or is it more realistic to realize that we're probably going to have to have a very few of them, in which case some of these concerns about detriment to the view shed will be alleviated? We just don't have that piece of information yet. I believe the RFIs, the request for information, the responses will be available for the review by the end of the day tomorrow. It might give you the kind of answers that you're looking for on how to deal with the impact of an 80-foot tower, administratively approved 80-foot tower ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom? Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom that would like to speak with regards to the towers only? Not seeing anyone. I'll close the public hearing portion of this and move to the board for discussion.
So what Mr. Henry said makes a lot of sense about putting them up and taking them down if need be. I agree that if it's going to happen in a timely basis, it almost has to be administrative, because if it one up, you know, one by one with a process of approval, it'd never get done. I do agree that maybe a 30-day right to appeal would be okay to protect the adjoining landowners if need be. But it's a knee-jerk reaction that not in my backyard is a knee-jerk reaction, and every damn one of them would be spoken against, I believe, if we went case by case in terms of, you know, applications. That's what my first impression is.
I did put up on the screen the standards that these facilities must meet. And just to run it down real quickly, 1,000 feet away from any primary highway, camouflage to suit the location, and be non-reflective, no tower lighting, and not located within a 100-year flood plain. Also, not significantly alter existing surface features, and not be constructed in wetland fills, and not cause water diversion there, shall not require significant deforestation. Now, if there's no trees, then it's obviously not a problem. And beyond that, it doesn't require a formal site plan, but it does require a drawing to show exactly where it is on the property. And if it's not used for a period of two years, then it must be removed. The discussions regarding potentially adding appeal language may be appropriate but not contemplated in the version that was advertised for public hearing. And certainly, the board could include that, but that would have to go through a separate public hearing.
So what's wrong with having it in a 100-year flood plain? I mean, if it's going to happen once every 100 years, you can get into it the other 99 years.
Not exactly the way that works.
And even if it floods, you know, the water's going to go down, you know, unless it's something that was short out, if there was electricity that went into the ground. So I don't see why it needs to be prohibited from a 100-year flood plain.
We don't have a lot of flood plain. That is a restriction for the taller types of towers, and it was carried over for these shorter towers. Most of the time, these are going to be on geographically advantaged, elevation advantaged parcels anyway.
As a member of the board of supervisors, again, I just want to thank folks like Margaret Bond and others who really spearheaded the effort in the county to jumpstart this broadband expansion effort, which is critical to the public interest. Our schoolchildren in particular need reliable internet service. I do think that we all know well the providers who are already here in the county and the need for the smaller providers that have been operating in Rappahannock County to harden their infrastructure. I think this at least gives them a path for hardening their infrastructure. I think members of the planning commission did a good job working through the details, and Mr. Curry just summarized the conditions that would apply in this administrative permit process. I do think the notice and appeal additions are useful. I appreciate Ms. Ishi's contributions tonight. But I think we're nearly good to go with this, and I do think we need to get something on the books, given the timing of the RFI process. And so I would hope that we can adopt something tonight, get it on the books, and if there's a need to refine, we can do that going forward. But this at least puts us in a position where we can credibly respond to RFIs once they come in from any internet service providers that show interest in our county. Thank you.
I wonder if it makes sense to have any kind of provision for a minimum lot size? I didn't see that in any of the language, or if there was an opportunity for people that wanted to put up a tower and maybe didn't meet that minimum, to be able to combine certain, you know, have properties sort of all agree to go in together and only build a tower in one specific location, the most advantageous location, so that then we're sort of getting ahead of the, you know, towers everywhere, worst-case scenario? I did wonder if there was any place for that. Just looking over the list we received, it is very attractive to me, this idea that must allow county and state police to co-locate equipment for public safety. It is a big problem in this county that when someone is taken in an ambulance, you can't give personal information over the radio system in the ambulances. So that sometimes you're en route to the hospital, and you're not able to communicate with the hospital to let them know what you've got coming in the door. So if there was any ability for us to kind of have any resources on towers, I would think it would be very attractive. And maybe rather than require it, we should incentivize it, and maybe there's a way forward for that.
Yeah, I believe the state code recently changed regarding our ability to compel the towers to have public safety on it. I think we can require them to have it at reasonable costs. Can't force them to do it for free.
Could we incentivize it? Waive the application fee or something along those lines?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
So as the discussion continues, at some point in time, you will need a recommendation from the planning commission and some formal action from that body, and then the board of supervisors can consider from there.
I do know when Mr. Schumaker was discussing it, his thought was to, the 80-foot tower versus a pole would be much easier to carry up a hill, put it near the trees so that people don't see it, because it comes in pieces. So I know when he was discussing it, he truly meant it to be more on the mountainside so it really wouldn't stand out, be next to a road or anything like that. The comments Ms. Ishi made, you know, somebody could do that. But I, you know, I'm not an expert. Don't think of me that way. But I can't see a Chantel or the larger companies wanting an 80-foot tower. I mean, right now, most of them are looking at fiber over electric lines. And so I think the 80-foot tower is more for the smaller businesses that want to stay in the county and provide a product or service to the citizens. Just my opinion.
And let's not forget, the Chantel representative was proposing the installation of 12 cellphone towers to serve 830 households.
Those were not necessarily tall towers, in their proposal.
Proposed towers.
He was proposing taller towers.
Taller towers.
That wasn't clear.
But anyway, I think if the planning commission would like to give us a recommendation...
Sure. Thank you. So we've had some additional input from members of the planning commission. At this time, I would entertain a motion to move this forward to the board of supervisors. Again, we're making a recommendation for approval, denial of the draft ordinance as it's been advertised. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we pass the board of supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. The motion, and Mr. Sharp, you wish to second that? Any further discussion? And again, this is a recommendation for approval of the draft ordinance since its current form with a recommendation for approval to the board of supervisors. Mr. Henry made the motion. Mr. Sharp seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to take a roll call vote, if that's okay, just because of our strange arrangement here tonight. So just bear with me very quickly. Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shuland?
Aye.
Ms. Ishi?
No.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Thank you. So that's, we have made a recommendation for approval of the draft ordinance to the board of supervisors.
Supervisors, we have now the vote by the planning commission, the recommendation. Entertain a motion or further discussion?
For the purposes of moving the discussion forward, I'd like to make a motion based on what I thought was a really good suggestion from Ms. Bond, that we, I would suggest that we table this until the 19th or until such time as we have been able to review the responses from the RFI and make sure this version works in that context. And picking up that, hopefully, that's a broadband authority meeting. But we're also meeting as the board of supervisors that night. Maybe we should, I don't want to put anything else on the board of supervisors' agenda that night. I think we should table it until, is there time to act on it at the August board supervisors' meeting?
I would think.
No.
I would suggest, I just don't know in terms of if the broadband authority should want to take action based on this language, if it's got to fit a certain way. I want to make sure that we have time to be responsive at this level to the needs of the broadband authority.
I would say that the practical end of this ordinance is not really going to come to bear for some time when towers need to be constructed, although applications into the VADI program may want to know the outcome of this before the applications go in, which I think if you make a decision on the second, you should, I should do.
So maybe the best way to move it forward then would be to refer it to the broadband committee for...
Subtlety.
Broadband Authority, thank you, for a discussion at the meeting on the 19th.
On the 19th.
You do have a 60-day limitation without having to re-advertise it for something until 2004.
I would actually second this. I think Ms. Bond made a very good point, and we do have a little bit of time that we can look this over.
I'll second that. You know, sitting here, it never fails to come to fruition that the public sometimes does come up with some really good ideas that we may not have considered, and I heard them here tonight. So I agree with some of the points that Ms. Ishi brought forward, Ms. Bond brought forward, and I think that we might want to consider those at that later date of the 19th. But I have to say that I also agree with Mr. Henry. The reason we don't see a lot of those wooden poles on those ridges is you can't get up there with them. It's just not, it never was practical. When we thought about it as a board back here, what, you know, six, eight, 10 years ago, we thought it was a good idea at the time, but it hasn't played out.
And there have also been folks that put up Starlink towers, or towers to access Starlink. That may be a good solution for a lot of people that otherwise couldn't get service. And we also know of folks that have put up one tower and solved, you know, put up a tower privately and solved the broadband issue for a lot of people in their neighborhood, which was great, and didn't cause a lot of ripple effect, because they did it all at once and helped out a lot of people, a lot of their neighbors.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Want to make sure I understand the motion is what it is?
Refer this matter to the broadband authority for their regularly scheduled meeting on July 19th. And thank you for the planning commission for sending this to us.
And then be taken up by the board of supervisors at an undetermined date.
Right.
We got 60 days.
You've got to give a date circle when this board's going to revisit it.
We'll table it till the August 2nd meeting?
That would work.
Okay. Then that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. You good? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And I want to thank members of the planning commission for their attention and further input on this. I think it's a good process, and appreciate the public coming out and staying out till 10 o'clock. Madam Chair, before we jump into the next public hearing... Madam Chair, before we jump into the next public hearings, I might suggest a restructuring just out of respect for members of the public who are here on the draft solar ordinance.
Okay.
But I suggest that the Planning Commission members comment after the public hearing, and rather than before, just to allow the public to go first. But with that, from a Planning Commission perspective, again, we did do a preliminary review of draft ordinance amendment to Chapter 170 regarding electrical generating plants and facilities, including renewable energy facilities. That was done at our last regular meeting in June, and then I appreciate that the members of the Planning Commission further participated in a work session, which I missed for a personal reason. All very good input from the members of the Planning Commission, so we have a draft that has been advertised, and I just, again, want to thank the Planning Commission members for their input. And I think it would be appropriate if Mr. Curry, again, could just walk us through at a high level what we have in draft form before us tonight, as I think there's a lot of interest in it. And finally, I will say that I believe that the ordinance, as it's drafted currently, amounts to basically a moratorium on any kind of solar facilities on this scale. And so if we do adopt this ordinance in this current form, I do believe that we will need to revisit it in short order to make sure that it is workable and balanced. But I think it would have the effect of at least putting something on the books for now that would protect our county and our citizens in the near term. Thank you.
I'll just state very quickly that the public hearing is advertised as a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 1522204. This ordinance amendment does a couple things. It adds a clear definition for electrical generating plant facilities, which is already a use provided for and identified in your zoning ordinance, and makes clear that those uses, a typical electrical generating plant facility, what the definition is tied into the state code, and basically sets the minimum yard requirement at 1,000 feet for that use. Many people use the term setback instead of a yard requirement. So that's an important point. It also sets definitions for electrical generating plant facilities, renewable energy small, which is the type of use that would be used to generate power for your own parcel or adjacent parcel under common ownership. And those are mandated to be permitted by right by the Code of Virginia, and this carries that through and includes in your zoning ordinance the zoning approval by right for this sort of use. And then it provides a definition for electrical generating plant facilities, renewable energy utility. And that is basically not primarily providing electricity for the parcel or immediately adjacent parcel under common ownership. So that's those facilities that are providing electricity into the grid and selling it as a utility. So with those definitions, your use table is updated to allow the small by right and signified by P in all zoning districts, and allow the renewable energy, which could be solar or wind, by special exception, coming to this board and requiring a site plan. There was some question of whether it should be allowed by a special exception for all zoning districts, and when it went through the Planning Commission at their last meeting, that was not changed, and that was what was included in the version sent for public hearing. Specific to those facilities that are utility scale, there are several requirements this ordinance places on those in order to be cited going through that special exception process. I'm not going to go through them in detail here. The main restrictions, though, are linked to this section number three under, it's 17064I3, and this section seeks to modify the use regulations that are typically found in 17038, which includes your maximum height and setbacks or yard dimensions. And what this says is, in no case shall the minimum yard requirement be less than 500 feet from all lot lines, but it allows the Board of Supervisors, on a case-by-case, to apply a different yard requirement. In no case shall the parcel size be less than 500 acres. And then the installed facilities, solar panels, wind generation equipment, ancillary equipment, et cetera, must be contained within 100-acre contiguous area. So you must have at least a 500-acre parcel, of which only 100 acres could be used for this electrical generating use. The use shall not be located in prime agricultural soils on slopes less than 15%, which areas are depicted on map number eight from the comprehensive plan. And then the use shall be on a parcel with at least 200-foot frontage along a state-maintained road that is minimum paved width of 20 feet along the entire length of travel to a primary road. And that recognizes the fact that when these facilities are constructed, there's a lot of heavy equipment coming and going, and down small lanes is not really appropriate. In addition to requiring a site plan, several other items are required as identified, and one of the main things in addition that is required is a decommissioning plan needs to be provided, and that decommissioning plan has to come along with some sort of surety, whether it be a bond or other form, that would secure the removal of the facility, decommission the facility at the end of its life. And then at the very end, it sets a maximum term for any permanent issue by the board to 20 years. So that in a very small nutshell is this draft ordinance, which has been available for public inspection since it was advertised to the public in the newspaper, and it's been available publicly on your meeting agenda site.
Great. Thanks very much for that. Madam Chair, as mentioned, I think we should turn to the public hearing first and then gather comments from the Planning Commission.
I agree with you. Thank you. I'm opening the public hearing with regards to this, what's the incorporated, to the requirements for electrical generating plants and facilities to include renewable energy facilities. Any? Yes, ma'am?
She was saying.
See the punch?
She was sitting behind you, and I'm trying to, she's been waiting a long time. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Karen Bowling Dick, and I am a member of the Wakefield District. I've been a property owner in that district since I was 17 years old, and this land was put in an LLC about six years ago. And I would like to, I'm actually reading you a letter on this that a member of my LLC, he's a 25-year-old young man who is not able to be here this evening, and it'll be explained in the letter. "To Chairman Donahue, Chairman Woodson, and other members of the board and Planning Commission, thank you for putting this meeting together and for all that you do to serve our county. 2,365 miles, that is roughly how far it is between the Hilton Garden Inn in Boise, Idaho, where I'm typing this email, to the spot that my mother is currently reading the remarks. Why does it matter? Despite the distance and work responsibilities, it shows that where my head and heart always are. Flying over the county, flying over the country yesterday, across the expansive Midwest America, my thoughts kept returning to our small slice of heaven and this important topic that you are talking about today. I was struck by Mr. Fletcher's comments a few weeks ago when speaking on the solar power issue. He admitted that in the past, when it came to the cell towers that split this county in two, he might be wrong in his opposition, and that he would hate to see us make the same mistake again. I could not agree with him more. Our county's power, country's power grid is severely out of date. The recent string of foreign hacks on our pipelines highlight this weakness severely. During a trip to your favorite bookstore, you would be shocked to find many titles in the mystery and thrillers section devoted to far-fetched ideas of the power grid going offline. Whether naturally or through nefarious actions, the scary thing is, it is no longer far-fledged, is here today. I do not claim that solar holds all the answers. What I do know is this: What you all decide in the coming days and months on this issue will impact our county in a level equal to those of the power lines, the cell towers, and of course, the broadband. The generation it will impact the most may not even be the ones that are here today in this crowd. Instead, it will be my generation who will carry the burden of the decisions made by this body on these and other important issues. We are the ones who will inherit a county being attacked on all sides by spiral growth from Northern Virginia. We will be the ones who must figure out a way to balance the need to maintain the beauty and history of this county with the cold, hard reality that it is not cheap, nor is it easy to hold on to large amounts of land. Given the choice of a developer or renewable energy company showing up on my doorstep in the next 10, 15, 20 years, I know which party I would let in. One means a surefire way of losing the life Rappahannock has known for nearly 300 years, while the other could possibly mean a way to generate revenue, gain energy independence, and maintain what it means to own and care for this beautiful land in our county. I urge this committee and the attendees in the crowd who are on the fence to please keep an open mind in this matter. Work diligently to figure out if it isn't a viable option, and help myself and the future landowners of Rappahannock County carry on the legacy of all of those who came before us and worked so hard to maintain the beautiful land. I thank the chairs, the committee members, and my fellow citizens for your time. Thank you."
Thank you.
Good Lord.
Tell him well-written. Huh? Tell him well-written. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
Squeezed just there.
Yeah. Glasses on. My name is Susan Ralston, and I'm actually a resident of Culpeper County, but I've spent a lot of time in Rappahannock County. I have a lot of friends who live here. And I was actually asked to come and speak by residents of this county because of the work I've done in Culpeper on solar. I'm the founder and president of Citizens for Responsible Solar. It's a 501(c)(4) grassroots organization that was created to advocate for the protection of rural land and the responsible siting of industrial-scale solar plants. As Rappahannock prepares to adopt an ordinance, I'm here to share with you some of the best practices that we've learned from multiple applications that we've seen in Culpeper and what I've learned from other experts in the field. And for a little background, about three years ago, a foreign energy company came and attempted to develop and destroy 1,800 acres of historic agricultural land in my district. I own a horse farm. It's zoned A1, and when a landowner purchases land that's either zoned RA or A1, you really don't expect that your county is going to approve a power plant next door to you. And that's what utility-scale solar is. It isn't a farm, it's a power plant. The majority of our Board of Supervisors was very enthusiastic about the promises that the developer made about the solar project, and they wanted to overlook the concerns of the many residents. The county may have benefited, a few landowners would have benefited, but at what cost to the county. To be clear, we're not opposed to solar. I use solar on my own farm for fencing and for lights, and we don't oppose small-scale solar on agricultural land to be used to protect and diversify the electricity needs of a single landowner. But we do oppose utility-scale solar on agricultural, rural, or timberland. Solar of that size and scale is not agricultural. Utility-scale solar is sold and fed into the electrical grid, and thus it is a power plant, and it doesn't belong on farmland. We advocate for the responsible siting of these large projects on industrial-zone land, marginal, or contaminated land, or on commercial and residential rooftops. Because of generous state and federal tax incentives that have fueled a huge demand for renewable energy, rural land is the least expensive route for these energy companies to build these plants. And if rural counties don't protect this limited resource, our farmland, our timberland, then they have zero incentive to build these projects on industrial or commercial land. I'm telling you, these developers are very, very aggressive. Millions of dollars are at stake, and they're betting on the willingness of landowners to forsake farming and for counties to ignore the pleas of impacted residents who don't want to live next door to a solar plant. Because Culpeper does not have a solar ordinance, we have been fighting these projects for years and years and years. And I want you to know that our organization has been helping communities, residents, landowners, grassroots organizations from all over the country who are being bombarded by solar developers. Tens and tens of thousands of acres are being destroyed. And ultimately, this comes down to the vision of your local leaders. What do you want Rappahannock to be? I really do applaud you for developing and wanting to adopt an ordinance, and it's a huge step in the right direction, because it's an important piece of legislation that is going to protect your county. I urge you to adopt an ordinance that will.
Can we cut this, please?
Adopt an ordinance that restricts solar, industrial-scale solar, not on agricultural land, that you don't allow solar, utility-scale solar on agricultural land. It's important that it be restricted to industrial-zone land. Madison County did pass an ordinance that restricts it to industrial-zone land. It can be done, and I hope that you will consider adopting an ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'll make this brief, because she said it better than I possibly could. We don't want one of these things. These utility-scale solar, I don't know if you've seen them, they're hideous, and we don't need one. As the owner of one of the larger, probably, solar generating plants in Rappahannock, if you want to do it for your home or your personal use, I applaud it, but we do not want a utility-scale solar plant in this place. She gave you a lot of good reasons, there's a million more. I would really like to see us say, "Not at all," and encourage people to do it on a personal level, but not at a utility scale, and just make it impossible for people to do. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Diane Bruce Sperryville, I agree with what the lady from Culpeper said, wholeheartedly. I don't see that the utility-scale one provides much benefit to Rappahannock County at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bill Fletcher, Sperryville. One issue came up with the lady from Culpeper that was very interesting to me, and I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to listen to the joint meeting on the 18th, but when the expert, I guess, I couldn't pick up his name, but Mr. Curry arranged to talk at the Planning Commission, he said something very interesting to me, and it was kind of a revelation. He said, basically, all the land in Rappahannock is contaminated with heavy metals, and I believe that to be true, from the coal-fired plants in Kentucky and West Virginia. Other thing I would say in response to this young lady's, I'm a farmer in Rappahannock. My family's been farming for 300, almost 300 years in Rappahannock. I quit. I couldn't afford to lose the money that I was farming, and I rented it all out. I'd like to be able to afford to go back in farming, but I had a company from New York, a group of individuals wanted to rent 500 acres from me for hemp production, and they were going to pay me $500 an acre for this, which I know it's legal, and I was all for. Well, I would have invested three of my crop fields, which, and I have a fair understanding of what's going on in the farm, certainly for the last 50 years, and I know where we sprayed DDT and all back in the day, but the reports came back on each field that I had heavy metals, and they were seven miles apart, and a mile apart, and different things, but ones in Piedmont District, ones in Stonewall Hawthorne. And I've owned land probably in every district in the county at one time or another in my And there are two major issues that are confronted with a rural county. One is clean water, another is electricity. And the power grid is definitely failing. We represented pot. We've represented Pottad and different companies over my lifetime, and we've got trouble with power grid. In the present ordinance, it's written, in my opinion, and I've talked to a number of other lawyers in this county and outside, it's exclusionary. You're better off to write a reasonable ordinance that will allow some of it, the ordinance effectively now is exclusionary, and we have a new set of judges in the 20th Judicial Circuit, and I think your ordinance as written would be exclusionary, and it'd be better to, in my opinion, it'd be better, and it takes two years for the state and regulations, for the approval of an ordinance. I think I would suggest to you that you send it back to the Planning Commission, and they don't want to touch it either. But this present ordinance, I'm afraid, as it's presented, is so exclusionary, it isn't a pass muster. And I think I would suggest respectfully that you refer it back to the Planning Commission and listen to your counsel, and maybe get an expert to help you draw an ordinance that is enforceable and correct. I also believe that you're going to have to do something if you're going to keep farms operating in Rappahannock County. I've talked to five or 10 farmers, and I was fairly large farmer, I guess you'd say, but most of them are having difficulties. You can't make money on a farm, not even a survivable wage right now. And this is a tool in your arsenal, maybe to promote open space, and you should consider that. I'm not saying I'm for solar. I'm not saying I'm going to put it on Thornton Hill or the Miller Farm, but I think it's something that needs to be investigated, and I believe in the light of the uncertainty and the global warming, which I believe is certainly happening in the community, if you don't have access to power. I remember my father talking about when it came into Thornton Hill in 1936 or '38, how it changed life dramatically, and if a hundred citizens in this county lose power, you've got real problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anyone else in the courtroom? All right, we do have people on Zoom. Anyone that would like to speak with regards to this public hearing? Please raise your Zoom hand. Nope. Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing, and Mr. Whitson, the court is yours again.
Sure. Just before we jump into this, I just want to remind my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors that under item R of our 20-page agenda today is the language that said the chair shall automatically adjourn without the benefit of any motion or debate, any meeting of the board, which has not been concluded by 11:00 p.m. And it's clear we have additional work beyond this to do tonight. I don't know if it would be appropriate...
But that section goes on to say, unless it's extended by...
Right, and so that's what I would... You're like Radar O'Reilly. You're one step ahead of me. So I don't know if it would be appropriate, but I would go ahead and make a motion that we extend the time for tonight's meeting beyond the 11:00 p.m. automatic adjournment point, and that way we don't need to watch the clock as the Planning Commission members jump in.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
Ms. Smith with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. At this time, I would like to invite the members of the Planning Commission to comment, and I think, and I would just say, I appreciate Mr. Fletcher's comments that the ordinance as currently written is exclusionary. I also am sensitive to the fact that we ought to have something on the books, and then I wonder if we can't figure out a way to continue to work on revisions and refinements after putting something on the books, at least for now, and I mean on a very short timetable. So with that context, I'd just invite Planning Commission members to comment. I do know that Mr. Sharp and Mr. Henry had offered some changes to the draft ordinance that was advertised, and I think we'll just have to rely on our attorney to inform us the extent to which those changes could be made tonight, or whether they would put us in any kind of jeopardy vis-à-vis the ordinance that's been advertised. But go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
Well, I agree that this ordinance as proposed is basically a moratorium. I do not oppose passing it tonight in this form, but I do think we could do a little bit better. And I think to Mr. Fletcher's point, or to Alan's point, if there is, if he's made one, that basically it is possibly a tool or a source of revenue for farmers, and I don't think it should take up the entire farm. And I think it's reasonable to have a percentage of a farm engaged in this activity. I'm not sure that you can exclude farmland because farmland is probably the only place you can legitimately do this. I'm talking basically about solar panels. I'm not sure. I haven't thought too much about wind because maybe that could be on conservation zone, but I think agriculture zone is really where the solar is likely to be done. I propose, or have proposed, taking this ordinance and just deleting a few sections that are exclu, or I don't know if the word is exclusionary, but prohibitive. One of them being the minimum acreage of 500 is rules out most possible places, I think. But I don't, either eliminate that or reduce that to something like 50 acres. And with the 1,000-foot, if I understand it correctly, 1,000-foot yard requirement, I mean, that eliminates a lot of parcels.
500 feet.
Oh, 500. Okay, I mean 1,000. Okay, so it'd have to be at least 1,000 feet wide.
Then you wouldn't have any room for the parcel.
Right. Okay. So that's one. The slope, and that's the prohibition against putting it on agricultural land, while I don't think we could put a restriction to 20% of the lot size tonight, I think that we could remove that prohibition on putting it on agricultural land, but then immediately get to work on establishing restrictions on how much of the parcel could be incorporated or used in this manner. The roadway requirements, I have trouble with simply because you're talking about effectively a one-time action, which is bringing equipment in, and then it's not needed again. And so I don't necessarily see why that would be necessary. So I would propose, considering eliminating that. And then there's the surety bond, and I tried to craft, I can't even read it because it's got, in my copy, it's got yellow over red. But basically, the idea was possibly there'd be a way of recording the obligation to decommission the solar panels, and then that being a primary lien or restriction on the property that would be superior to any other lien. I think that could be done, and that would give an alternative to this, I don't even know how you calculate the amount of a surety bond or certified funds that have to be put on, you know, in an account or where they'd be held for 50 years or however long these things last. And the final thing is, I don't think the 20-years limitation on a permit accurately reflects the lifespan of these. I think they're more like 40- or 50-year things. I think that excludes, makes it prohibitive, and so I think that could be eliminated. I read some emails from a couple of the members that had very good ideas that I think could be incorporated, but I feel like they would have to be advertised. And so I think the Planning Commission and supervisors could immediately get to work on that. But I think the protection here is to have something on the books tonight, and I'm saying that I would accept basically this or anything between. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Madam Chairman, I think we'd have to have an opinion from the county attorney, but I think everything that you recommended would require re-advertising because...
It's less restrictive.
Yeah, but you can't go by less restrictive. We did that years ago with the tourist home, and it's a matter of proper, I forget what...
Avoid abonysia.
Right, because, but the problem is, if somebody read what we were advertising at night and said, "Well, hey, I'm in favor of that, and so I'm not even going to go out if that's what they're going to approve." If we make it less restrictive, there's going to be a half a dozen people that would have said, "Hey, if I had have thought that that was going to happen, I'd have come out that night." So we really can't, just because it's less restrictive, isn't going to...
Well, I mean, I...
It has to be properly noticed, and I don't know what the word is, but the attorneys in the room would know what it is.
Mr. Goff is looking at that right now, and my input would be, as we, you think about what is less restrictive, it does depend on perspective, and is it less restrictive for somebody who wants to install a renewable energy source, or is it less restrictive from somebody who lives next to a renewable energy source? And those are not exactly aligned. So it's difficult to make many changes at this point, I believe, that are substantive. If there's, if there are portions that are not clear, and the wording can be changed to clarify the meaning without changing the intent, I think that's okay. Of course, Mr. Goff is working on the question.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and continue with Planning Commission members. Mr. Henry is in the on-deck circle, if you want to.
Gentlemen...
Ladies.
Hey, anybody else? I come with a little bit more knowledge on this subject than I like to have. About 10, 15 years ago, I bought a piece of land in Shattuck County on Walker Road, a little west of Mount Jackson. You look at a piece of land, Milk Creek, Frontage, Trout Street, five acres of wood, good crop land. You walk through it, and you plow it, and your feet will go down up this way, just fantastic. Really great pumpkins, sweet wood, because golf's been there. And I love the piece of property, and I put it in sinagies because I just wanted it to stay that way. Well, unfortunately, two things. I have a small substation across the road, and it was three-phase electric running across from the property. Come from Merillide Factory in a couple of places. Well, now, I have about 150 acres of solar across the road on a farm that was known as Turkey Knob that was a great apple production for almost 100 years and grew great corn. And then a neighbor across the road, he worried about me developing my property. He was putting in 37 acres. My neighbor to my west, who I worked for as a kid, he's putting in about 50 acres. And across another road there is going to be about another 50 acres. So I'm going to have 200 or 300 acres of solar fields around me, and it's uncomfortable. And having said that, I guess I'm like everybody else in this room, a U.S. citizen, and I use power, and it comes from someplace. It comes out like a switch in the wall. But John here the other night said that 20% of our power is coming from coal steel, and the comment about the metals in the soil, Mr. Fletcher said, and this guy confirmed that they came to coal-fired furnaces. I think that air quality is an issue. I think it's part of the global warming that does exist, and I think we're proud of our heritage here in the county of being a clean, environmentally sensitive community. We pride ourselves in the quality of our water. We dug everything here to protect our water streams, and we've got the headwaters of Rappahannock and many of those streams. We brag about providing fresh water downstream to our neighbors, and I think for us to come up with an ordinance that basically prohibits any type of solar production, basically says, "We're going to coop in somebody else's backyard, but we're not going to be responsible for any good stewardship here for this electricity." So I'm in favor of some electricity here. I think what we wrote here was kind of quick knee-jerk. I mean, there's a lot of people out here fishing for projects, and that's what they're doing, to make phone calls, and the probability of success is low in most cases. You've got to have the ability to transport electricity through a three-phase line, and there's only so many of them in Rappahannock County. And then you've got to get your project accepted by General Power, and it's a lot of things that need to happen. I think, when I sent out an email today, and I think what we should maybe be looking at is a minimum lot size of 100 acres. No more than 50% of the site can be used for production of electricity. I think to keep it, I would apply KISS principle on anything I can possibly do. I think in terms of setbacks, we doubled the setbacks for that particular area, so the ag setbacks would be twice the normal amount, the setbacks for an area. And most of these projects, leases are signed by people, are 25 years. I think that'd be appropriate, and as Mr. Sharp said, you know, they bring the equipment in, they do the work, and leave, and the very little work they're active. So in terms of access to the property, I don't think that's a problem. And I don't think we should do this on prime agricultural land. That was my biggest concern over the valley, because that's the finest land that the valley had was going into solar fields. And I think we have the solar maps, and I think we should exclude prime agricultural land from being considered. And we look at the fact that 20% of the county is in park, another 20% is on the sinagies, and then we're only going to be looking at, and also property needs to be zoned ag, no solar fields in conservation zone areas. You limit it to ag areas of things above 100 acres in size, I think you've boxed it down to where there's a limited number of places, but it still may be feasible for some people to come up with some properties here and there. And going back, how many years did it spend, when we did the cell towers here in the county, one of the things that the Planning Commission had in mind when we did the initial southern cell towers was to try to locate towers on some of the large parcels recognized, and as Mr. Fletcher said, that there were some economic issues with farming back then, as it is now, and if we contribute this income to some of the larger landowners, maybe they would help them in their long-term planning to keep the land together. And I think we was pretty successful in putting cell towers on properties that were owned by people that had already... I don't know whether it had any relevance, but I think pretty much all those tracks are still together today. So whether that was successful or not, it was part of the plan that we did a couple decades ago. That's my comments on it.
Thanks, Lon. Mr. Kohler?
Thank you, gentlemen. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Sharp and Mr. Henry have said. I think we have two parallel tracks going on here right now. We need an ordinance on the books. There seems to be strong concern that there may be an application coming, that we wouldn't have any ordinance in effect, and we're left without much to say. So I think we do need to establish an ordinance. That said, I think we need to establish a good ordinance, and I think it's a two-step process. I think we need to establish one now, and then form a commission, or a committee, or whatever you want to call it, to... whatever you want to call it, to draft a final ordinance and get that on the books, say, within nine months, six months, whatever it takes to have public hearings and everything else. That said, I think that the, making too many big changes is going to be problematic. Void ab initio, as Ms. Smith said. The, we can't, I don't think we can change 500 to 100 or 200 right now on this, on this document. So, I had just a couple of minor changes I would like to make to this document, and then if that's agreeable with everybody, maybe we can move forward with it. The, if I may, and I've cut this down from about 15, because I have a lot of little ones, but I think a lot of those could go in a new ordinance, and they don't need to be done now. Things I think need to be done now would be on line 117, if you have it there. It says impaired or diminished by visual intrusion of renewable energy facilities or supporting facilities. I added "supporting facilities" just because there will be cables and perhaps towers and other things that need to carry the power wherever it's got to go. On line 158, the location, at the beginning, the location, and here insert and types of facilities. So, I would like to have, not just the location, but the types will be, I don't have my laptop in front of me, but that was where that sentence read. On line 198, it states that it will be re-reviewed, but it doesn't say by whom. So, I'd like to know who's going to do the review of, of whatever's...
What was that line number?
198.
198.
For review.
And the same thing in line 219, it says "review," but it doesn't state who does the review.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we can clarify that without making any drastic change to the ordinance right now. And other than that, I don't think, unless we can change the years of, before it's decommissioned, from 20 to 30, or something a little more realistic, which may again be a problem with voiding it, those are the only things I have, which are some clarifications, really. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Mr. Light?
I agree with what's been said. I think Mr. Henry in particular has articulated some good concerns. The only thing I would add is the consideration that there's already a lot of land in Rappahannock County that's been impacted by transmission lines, and, you know, it's hard to imagine that putting solar panels under those transmission lines would be much of a problem. So, I think the bottom line here is you've heard a lot of good ideas. I think this is a case where you wanted something bad, and you've got something bad, and whether that's better than nothing, I think is up to you to decide tonight. I think it sends kind of an odd signal to pass something if none of us really like it for any number of reasons. I'm not sure that's really good policy. Clearly, it needs some more work, and again, I think there's a lot of good ideas on the table, including consideration of already impaired lands. So, I think we should go back and look at it, whether you do that with or without passing something close to what you've already advertised tonight, I think is, you know, why you get paid the big bucks. Thank you.
And don't forget, you get paid some bucks, and that you actually have to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors before they do their work, so, all right. Okay, Mr. Shulman? Sorry, I, MK, I didn't mean to, all right, I'm just...
I asked her.
Okay.
Well, personally, I'm not a fan of solar. I think any industry that needs that much government money to keep it going or get it started is just highly suspect to me. I'm not against voting to send this to you all as it is, however, I think it definitely could use some tweaking. I think even though I'm not a fan, it, it basically eliminates any opportunity for solar, aside from any property on the county except for the landfill, which I think is a great place to work.
Ms. Ishi?
So, as tired as the public and the Planning Commissioners are, you all have been going since, what, 2:00 this afternoon, so you must be at that point where it's, you feel like everything that needs to be said has been said, but not everybody has said it. So, here, I'll add my two cents on that. I, I'm sort of agreeing with Mr. Kohler that I think there's, and actually what others have said, that there's a lot that needs to be added and considered in this. I've had the opportunity to speak with some folks in Spotsylvania County, which has approved a 3,500-acre solar farm, some folks in Culpeper who have approved a 1,000-acre solar utility-scale facility, and, you know, they're kind of backpedaling. They're like, "Okay, whoa, what have we done, and what can we do, and this is, this is more impact than we thought." There is a huge distinction between utility-scale solar and small-scale solar. We're doing the right thing, and I think we have to by state law to put the small solar. The organizations that have looked at this in Virginia, PEC submitted a letter to us, Gary, Mr. Curry sent around a couple of documents to us. One was from the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Board, the other was from the Alliance for Shenandoah Valley, I think. And I had sent around some material that I pulled out of those two documents that had specific recommendations, both for construction-level work and, and some technical things like requiring developers to pay for a consultant, a technical consultant to review each application, just a, just a number of recommendations they had had. But the things that Mr. Henry has come up with and Mr. Sharp, you know, I think are worth considering. I, so I would support what Mr. Kohler has suggested, that we go ahead and just pass this tonight, bearing in mind that I have worked also in renewable energy for a number of years. I've been an advocate in my past life for this, but everything is about citing everything when you come to these facilities. And somebody asked at our work session, you know, "What are the environmental impacts from this?" I know there are environmental impacts from, from the construction, but I don't, even all the years I've worked in it, I don't know what the other environmental impacts are. I know when they put huge solar utility-scale facilities in the desert, they had all kinds of problems with endangered species because it ended up killing a lot of endangered species underneath the panels. Whether we have those kinds of issues, I have no idea. I don't know what the issues are here, but I think before we're in the same position as Spotsylvania and Culpeper, we ought to get something in place, move forward, and then take some time to do this thoughtfully, look at what experts are recommending, and what other counties who have already walked this, this path can tell us. And these solar developers aren't going away. There'll be opportunities.
Great. Just tilt it back. Yeah, there you go, you got it. All right, thank you. Any additional comments from members of the Planning Commission? Suggestions been made, maybe forming some kind of, I don't know the proper description, perhaps a working group? And I wonder, along the lines of what Mr. Kohler suggested, if you could just, if Mr. Goff or Mr. Curry advised me, could we, could we in fact have a joint working group comprised of, say, for example, two members of the Planning Commission, two members of the Board of Supervisors? I'm not talking about the Board of Supervisors, obviously, in this context, but from the Planning Commission's standpoint, could we go ahead and move that we, we appoint two members of the Planning Commission to a working group for the Board of Supervisors, consider to do the same, something along those lines?
Yeah, well, I think the Board, I think what would likely happen is the Board of Supervisors would create a committee comprised of whoever you want. You can create committees from time to time right now, so you're empowered to do that. It would be a public body, and meetings would be noticed, and the public would be invited to participate.
So, would the, the motion from the Planning Commission then simply be an interest in the formation of a working group?
The Commission could create their own body. I don't know that they could compel a member of the Board to be on it, but, yeah, I would think it would be appropriate for them to recommend to the Board to take that action.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was, I was going to add, that was going to be my suggestion, was members of both the Boards, or...
I'm trying to rate O'Reilly you like he did to me a short time ago.
But I also wanted to suggest that the, whatever the committee or the Commissioner, whatever it is, have a budget, so that we can get some outside help, perhaps from, like, someone like Berkeley Group or somewhere else, that could help us finalize the draft and not force it upon our county attorney and...
Of course, the Board did appropriate dollars into the Planning Commission budget for items like this.
Yep. So, yep, there's, there's money there, so I think, I think probably the most appropriate path is to, to form such a working group, and then we'll determine what kind of outside help you need, and then at that time determine how much it's going to cost, and whether we can, we can pull it off with the, with the money that's in the budget for this purpose. So, along those lines, I would entertain a motion, initial motion. Planning Commission recommended the Board of Supervisors a formation of a working group comprised, for starters, of some members of the Planning Commission, and then we're going to leave it to the Board of Supervisors to work out the details.
So moved.
Okay, so that's a motion from Mr. Kohler to recommend to the Board of Supervisors formation of a working group, to look further into the details and refinements related to this draft ordinance on electrical, electrical generating plants and facilities, including renewable energy facilities. Is there a second for that motion? Again, this is just a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors to form a working group.
I wonder if Mr. Kohler would entertain a, an amendment to that, which would be to suggest to the Board that we, they approved this language. I didn't hear that part there.
That's, we're getting there. So, mechanically, I think this is, this is separate and apart from consideration of the draft ordinance. This is just a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors, consider forming a working group.
I would be happy to second that, but be understanding that we would get to that second part.
We're getting there. Okay, motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed?
I would now entertain a motion based on the draft ordinance that's been advertised, sorry. Sorry. Entertain a motion based on the draft ordinance as advertised. Again, as we did with the shore towers, draft ordinance, we're looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve or deny the draft ordinance in its current form.
I've never, I've been looking for it, vote to approve. I've never seen government do this before, where they approve an ordinance that they know is exclusionary or legal, and they do it with full intent of backing up from later on this night. Okay, we're going to have a capital, capital murder penalty for a couple of months, but then we're going to back it off to like prison. It's just odd that we're doing this.
We happen to staff that, you know, people, but...
I, I'd like to say that there may be, in fact, differences of opinion as to whether this is very restrictive versus exclusionary. I don't know if that's any of my, my time. Personally, that, given the fact that a lot of it is based on a comprehensive plan, I'm not sure.
I don't think you can show me one value of a park, park, or a county that's eligible for a solar field that's just, that's, I mean, 1,500, 1,500 acres.
I don't disagree with Mr. Henry, but I also have heard, as a member of the Board of Supervisors from my colleagues, that there's some urgency to place some ordinance on the books as quickly as possible, and so it's in the spirit of that, that...
I will say in response to that, I don't know if there's a track like that, but certainly an applicant can come in and make their case. We have a possibility, they can make their case.
I think it's got a government. I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay. Well, there's not a motion yet, so...
Well, I was just saying, it's got a government.
I will sub move.
Okay, Ms. Ishi, you're making a motion that we just adopt, recommend to the Board of Supervisors, recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the draft ordinance? Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sharp, second. Okay. Any further discussion?
Without including any of the suggestions anybody's made, none at all.
Well, Mr. Goff, do you, I mean, you've been looking into this, you've been deliberating, I mean, on the void ab initio principle. I mean, can we draw, can we draw a bright line between minor and significant changes, or would you just...
Well, yeah, you're talking about like a 711 case or Gas Park, where there's such a significant variance between the advertisement and what is actually eventually voted on, that the public didn't have noticed. Way this reads is that they're going to talk, you're going to talk about definitions, and you're going to talk about where they are located, must be permitted by special exception, it must meet certain special conditions included in the ordinance. Well, that's so broad. But if you're talking about a significant variance, like if you're going to cut it down from 500 acres as, as is written, to 100 acres, I think that's enough that maybe the public would have been here had they known that. So, as your counsel, I'm going to advise you to err on the side of caution with this.
Thank you.
Because there could be big money interests at stake that would love to take you to court. So, on that, I would say if you're going to pass it tonight, you're going to have to pass it as it's written, except for the small changes that Mr. Kohler, like we put those little tiny modifiers in that are insignificant, probably not even necessary.
Is there anything in Mr. Kohler's list of changes that would fall in the problematic area, or are you...
No, his, what he listed, I went through line by line, as he said it, were all little tiny, almost as if you were adding commas, or just jump-ins, or ands. So...
I'm happy, yes, I'm certain.
That's, that's all I have to say, as far as whether or not it's exclusionary to the extent that, the extent that it's challengeable. I, that's, that's a harder question, much, I can't answer that right now.
Okay, so, hearing on the side of caution, the changes would be limited to what Mr. Kohler's proposed, which would require you amend your motion.
Yeah, I'd amend the motion with, with more changes.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, can I ask Mr. Goff a question? Mr. Goff, as an attorney, the testimony here tonight in the court is common sense here, and the approval of this ordinance here at the, of the tower. Is this one full material for an attorney that's representing an applicant to use federal court against you? Yes or no, sir?
Yeah, it's good stuff.
Yeah, real good, real good.
And you're right, it's very strange that a body's going to go ahead and pass an ordinance that they all can't stand, they know they're going to repeal it later on, and what's the purpose, just to stop somebody from awfully applying right now?
Okay.
Under the ordinance that, as is written. So, yeah, it's stupid. I'm tired, so I'm going to tell it to you like I see it, it's dumb. Thank you.
But we're going to do it anyway.
So, you got a motion in a second, so let's get to it.
Yep. Discussion? Yep, go ahead.
I think there's another sort of odd circumstance here, and that is that a lot of this language is already written in our comprehensive plan, almost like a maintenance language, which is always, I can think uncomfortable with on the start, so I think we already have kind of a strange situation. So, in a way, reconciling the ordinance with our comprehensive plan makes a little more sense to me than it otherwise would, in the sense we've done it. So, yeah, if it comes down to it, I'm going to, I'd vote for it, but it can't hold no solider.
May I say something? I know this is the Planning Commission's opportunity to talk, but I did watch the meeting where you all had Mr. Schlar available to you to answer a lot of questions, and it seemed like you gave a lot of information and expertise at that time, and it seemed like that information and expertise generated a lot of wishful thinking that you could do this over. Is that, I know that two of you voted against it in the course of the meeting. How many of you would vote against it, knowing what you know now?
Sure, I think, voting against.
Voted against setting it up to us.
We can talk about it.
Well, I can, I can say that Mr. Henry and I voted against sending this to the Board of Supervisors for... for a joint public meeting tonight because we agreed that the ordinance as drafted needed a lot of work, but five members of the planning commission decided to vote for it. So from my perspective, we're now here, we have an ordinance and I think, while I appreciate Mr. Goff, Goff's input, I mean, we still need to make, I think, at some point soon in the next few minutes, some recommendation to the board of supervisors and we can decide what to do with it. But I don't disagree with Mr. Henry that it is an odd, it is an odd sequence of events, but again, I'm feeling pressure from, some pressure from my colleagues and members of the public to at least have something on the books as a protective measure and whether or not that it's good or bad government, I'm now in a position where I feel like we should at least do that with a commitment to continue to work through the details, so I don't think that answers your question, but that's, I did vote against it because I didn't think it was ready for prime time and I think Mr. Henry articulated very well why that's the case and still is probably. But I think we got to keep moving ahead and then work on a parallel track to clean it up and make sure that it would hold up in court if challenged.
And I'm just felt to add to that and I appreciate very much having the county council present and his opinion, whatever you have or disagree with. Or I can't say whatever, but I would very well disagree with him. But I also do think that, you know, this is a legislative decision and the legislative process is often making and a lot of times things are passed that nobody likes because of the compromise or particular purpose. And I feel like maybe that's what we're doing tonight and again, one would hope that since it's implemented our comprehensive plan, it's actually not exclusionary, it's got a good rational landing spaces for it and since our job is deciding these things, that this is not inappropriate, we might hold.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, we're going into this knowing full well that this is probably exclusionary and with the video and recordings here, it's pretty clear, the verbiage and testimony and everything is here for evidence. So if we are sued and our liability carrier reviews tonight's meeting, is there a probability that they would deny a code, your code, you knew full well that what he was doing was illegal? I was sure right there, you knew all the person who lied.
That's assuming we think it's illegal when they're.
How did you help them?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second and this is a recommendation for approval of the draft ordinance as advertised to the board of supervisors and then we'll take it up. Any further discussion? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ishi? Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Shulun?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
No.
And I'll vote aye. All right, thank you. So that, there are, there are two recommendations now to the board of supervisors, one is a recommendation that we form a working group with a certain number of members of the planning commission and then second, a recommendation for approval of the draft ordinance. And on the first motion, I just, for context, I do, I do think we need to put this on a short timeline for additional work, thank you.
And during that discussion, you had talked about getting the Berkeley group involved as well, I think.
Yeah, the question was whether we could, or whether there is money available to hire outside help and that was one of the reasons why we agreed to have a work session recently and with the hope of bringing expertise, but hopefully now that we have a bit more time, we can, we can, we can do that and there's money in the planning commission budget to do that.
Recommendation for a work group, any discussion on the board?
I would make a motion that we, sorry, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we, you know, create a structured group with the planning commission, members from both bodies.
Do you want to lay out the membership now or just have that at a subsequent meeting?
I think that could be a subsequent meeting myself.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, do I have a second?
So just to be clear, your motion was to?
To work together with a joint, a joint task force or whatever you want to call it, with the planning commission.
The details would be worked out?
Later.
Later?
I think so.
Okay. In August?
Whenever.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I just wanted to bring up, when we were working on the comprehensive plan, there was a lot of talk about in paneling special groups to work together between the board of supervisors and the planning commission and there was a lot of pushback to that idea because frankly, we already have groups of experts that are supposed to work together on these things and they are the planning commission with representative from the BCA and the board of supervisors on board and the board of supervisors after the planning commission has done their work and we proceeded within the lines at that time and followed the process. I wonder why we're going outside the process this time and forming a special working group. The mechanism is already in place to do the work, it's going to take us time to figure out the group, work out the rules of that group. All this doesn't seem very big, but it all eats up time.
I withdraw my second.
I don't mean, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but.
I agree, I agree.
But we have the mechanisms in place to do the work, why are we reinventing the wheel?
Yeah, you're right.
And frankly, you all are our experts, I appreciate the work you do very much and I don't think excluding some of you from the process is a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I'll withdraw my motion, Madam Chair.
All right, so.
We'd like to have some funding provided for some outside.
Well, the funding's there and we just have to determine quickly.
I would just also add that we do have some discretionary money in the board of supervisors' budget, we have a contingency budget and I am a firm advocate for education of all parties, all bodies of Rapid County Government and I think it would be money very well spent out of our contingency fund to allocate some additional money for education if that's what the planning commission is requesting. I trust you to do the work and I support you in doing the work and I appreciate very much the work that you do.
There's money already there, I think, but we can determine quickly if we'll need additional funds.
All right, so we can.
Okay.
Does that mean we get a higher salary?
For tonight, I think it's well deserved.
Second, the second conversation was that we need to vote on whether we want to move forward with the planning commission's recommendation on this document.
So this whole thing reminds me of the sludge issue we had here in the county many years ago and, you know, I for one was in favor of it, free fertilizer, you know, it got completely turned down and then later on, the state of Virginia kind of stepped in, in Dillon Rule thing and said, hey, you all have to do sludge. And then so what happened is the supervisors made it to where it was so restrictive that we've never had any sludge spread in this county, we're one of the few counties that haven't had any sludge spread. And I, in the meantime, found out that horses will not eat hay that's made on sludge fertilized ground and sometimes cattle won't either, so I'm happy that we didn't do it. But it's one of the things that makes this county, one additional thing that makes this county unique and the more little ticks of uniqueness we have, I think the better the future for the county is, you guys know, a lot of them that makes us unique and I honestly think that this should be one more reason that we're unique, we don't have any solar fields. I'm telling you, drive, if somebody's driving out here to enjoy the scenery, it's going to be a real buzzkill to go past a big solar field and I know it's a real downer for me and whatever county I'm in, if I go by one, it's like, oh man, what the hell is that? So I think if we figured out a way to avoid them altogether in this county, I would be, I would be happy with that. So I just think it's going to make the county overall more desirable and I don't know, apparently we can't just say no, right? I mean, we got to have something and it could be like we approach it like we did the sludge and just make it so restrictive that nobody is going to actually apply for it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance that's in front of us tonight.
Is that with Mr. Kohler's wording?
Yeah, fine, either way, it's fine, yeah. I'll second that, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Do we know clearly where this will allow this to happen based on the way it's drawn up now? Because we had two words tonight that set off alarm bells for me, which is moratorium and exclusionary and I can tell you, I would love to have a moratorium on short-term rentals, but it's, that would kind of open up a whole can of worms and probably blow the whole short-term rental up thing up more than ever.
Right.
So if we're making a moratorium or we are making exclusionary, we are making it worse.
It's, I would say that as drafted with the 20-year term, it, in its current form, it is restrictive, just to soften that use of the word moratorium. There's no doubt it is restrictive.
Did that language come from an existing ordinance somewhere else in the state?
I didn't, the 20 years was passed to me as the original proposal that went to the planning commission.
That came from some other locality, I believe.
I do not know. That's a, that's a business decision and I don't know that your ordinance is going to be deemed, you know, subject to the courts. Exclusionary based on a business decision that needs to be made by the company. Now, whether there are the right parcels in the right places, you know, that's different. If you do want to encourage these to happen in certain parcels, then that's certainly one term that you want to, the planning commission should focus on.
Regardless of language like that, it still has to be somewhere close to a line that, it has to be near a transmission line so that it can feed into the system or a large distribution line. So that, that alone is exclusionary, but that's not anything that we're doing, that's part of the power grid system.
Right.
Is it possible to pull in RRRC as part of this process to map, you know, what we might end up with?
Well, they have mapped areas that are generally supportive in the communities based on different factors. What they don't have is our parcel fabric and the size of parcels, so, and nobody has that at this point.
I do know when I mentioned this to Dr. Chandler, he did say that if we didn't have anything on the books, then we are open to somebody to come in tomorrow and go, sorry, free for all. And that's what has me concerned the most and to me, this is a stall for time move for the county so that we can do the work and get something written that is, you know, that does make sense and everybody can vote on and like, but I, I just feel like there's a risk there that I'm not willing to take to not have something on the books.
Right, and with the severability clause that is in our zoning ordinance, I believe, again, Mr. Goff would attest to how far off the mark I am, but with the severability clause, the court would not strike out the whole thing, it would just strike out whatever they feel that it is illegal or exclusionary, wouldn't it?
That's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, without anything on the books.
This is the only reason why we're moving too fast, because you just brought up a really good point, leaving it. And it's just, I know everybody wants this stopgap measure, but the thing is that, like your question there, I don't know the answer to, like sitting right here, because the severability clause is going to, a lot of times is going to depend on what it was severed for, you know, and I don't think even courts are going to go through our ordinance, going to cherry pick this line and that line and say, well, this one and that one has to go. I think they're going to, it's going to be a much broader brush than that and I don't know that a severability clause, not like the one that you find in a contract where, you know, if something's found to be, you know, incorrect for whatever technical reason, the court can strike that and still honor the rest of the contract. I'm not so sure about that with some pizza or legislation like this, I'd have to look at that. And I just don't, you know, I, is there, the public hearing was closed, right, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So that puts you back into that 60-day cycle. If we could take a deep breath and look at this gag on thing just a little bit more and look at some of these questions like you're talking about and even potentially re-advertise something, you know, what's going to happen in 60 days? You know, we don't know, yeah, he shrugs his shoulder, I don't know, but you're talking about, there's just a lot of issues I see bubbling up to the surface and as your counsel, I think you're going down a long rabbit hole.
Okay.
I think 60 days though, if we were to do something, I don't know, I just can't imagine us being wide open for another 60 days.
Well, is there, is there, is there anything that indicates that someone is chomping at the bit, ready to file an application?
Well, I've had a phone call with an individual in a, across the pond.
He called me too.
He called everybody, Ron, he was efficient.
Yeah, I understand, but it's, it's not that difficult to put an application and they've already got the paperwork, all they got to do is just get an address.
But then, you know, like what Gary said, you know, if you get an application, you can do a lot, a lot of management of that application through the time plan.
I think, I think we'd be better off to.
And do you have a three-phase line down that road where he said?
It's kind of close. Kind of close.
But, I mean, this is, this is how we ended up at this point, I mean, let's call it what it is, there's, there's a concern from certain of my colleagues, I'm serving on the planning commission, they asked us to take it up and move quickly and it's, that's the question, is a stopgap that might not be perfect in detail better than nothing or not? And I appreciate Mr. Goff's on-the-spot advice in this regard, but, I mean, that's the fundamental question we have to resolve.
Right, well, I know this much, the basic, the basic solar farm ordinance that we worked on, that's the planning commission that I was part of back, you know, six, eight months ago, we basically had culled, what we put together, cobbled it together from other locality, so it's either stood the test of time there or it hasn't been challenged there yet. But the only thing that's different that I am aware of are basically the three things, the setback, the minimum lot size and then the road and if, if we can, if we can have something as nefarious as a camper trailer that has to have a 20-foot wide road frontage before they can pull in and park at a travel trailer camp, we've got to have something to protect us from this construction traffic. You've got roads that are 14, 15 foot wide in some places and those, those vehicles are going to be coming down through there and there's no protection until after it's built and they just don't show up anymore? I don't like that, it's not a good idea. I mean, a travel trailer, it's always there, that restriction has always been there for over 20 years, so I think it's a very good protection measure.
So if we decided to take Mr. Goff's recommendation, is there any way to fast-track the work on this to get something in a very short period of time that's not so difficult to vote for?
I mean, that's our, that's our only.
Look, you know, it's no time to be pointing fingers, but we really should have had, I mean, that's been on the planning commission's books for over six months, except for these changes, so it really, we either go for it tonight and look at it a little bit later in leisure, because if we're going to be looking at it for the next 60 days, I don't think it's a good idea.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Who made the motion was?
Mr. Parrish, seconded by Mr. Fraser, to adopt the ordinance as presented with Mr. Kohler's wording suggestions as stated earlier. This is Rokel.
All right, Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
I'll vote aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. And I also. Thank you. Now we've got to get the Planning Commission and Berkeley-
Yeah. So before, before the Planning Commission members leave, first of all, thank you again. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Second my acclamation.
Mr. Sharp made the motion, and Mr. Henry seconded. All those in favor of adjournment of the Planning Commission meeting?
Good to see you, Al. Thank you. All right. Okay, yes. All right. We would like to go, if I can get Board approval or acceptance, we want to move to the Social Services, which is number nine on the public hearing.
Can we take a brief recess?
Two minutes?
Two minutes. Items we have left, I would like to have a motion to make number nine, Social Services, the next public hearing. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Welcome to Rapid County, right?
Dedicated people.
Was that a motion?
I'm sorry.
Was that a motion?
A motion.
What, who's?
We need a motion to move nine up to now.
So moved.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Number nine.
I feel bad for Ms. Crooks, who's been here all this time. So as the Board heard at your earlier meeting, Ms. Crooks passed along a memo with a request from the local Board of Social Services to modify your local ordinance that sets the size of the local Board of Social Services. That ordinance currently sets that body at three members, and through her well-written memo, requested that be increased to five members. One of the principal reasons for doing that is the FOIA constraints that places on a three-member board, with the quorum being two, makes it difficult for just two members of the local board to have any discussion outside of a called meeting. Being set as an ordinance, by ordinance, this did require a public hearing and advertisement pursuant to Code of Virginia 15 to 1427. That advertisement was conducted to the newspaper as, as is required. And you can see this ordinance amendment I placed on the board literally is deleting the word "three" and inserting the word "five" into your current ordinance.
So this time I'll open the public comment with regards to this local Board of Social Services item. If there's anybody in the courtroom that I could just speak to this, please come up and do it.
And, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure, is, are we opening public? Are we not-
Public hearing.
We're opening a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Seeing none in the courtroom, anyone still on Zoom?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I'm sorry. And unfortunately, I had that on mute. So we are now in the public hearing for the local Board of Social Services for those folks on Zoom. Sorry, I had you on mute. Which one is the computer downstairs? And one is Ms. Crooks who's sitting in front of us, so.
Hey, so I'm guessing nobody on there that would like to speak? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. I can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we increase the-
So there's an ordinance in the document provided. I would need a motion to adopt the ordinances provided.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinances provided.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry. Mr. Fraser? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really paid off.
Where are we now?
Be careful driving home.
Number seven?
Yeah. Thanks for coming.
We're now on number six?
Number six. Hang in there. We're almost there.
Number six is your public hearing. This topic has been before the Board a number of times with various iterations on the changes to the ordinance that defines how your volunteer public, volunteer fire and rescue members can be, receive credit for their personal property taxes. In the past, this was set as a credit that combined with your motor vehicle license tax was capped at $599. The Code of Virginia allows the Board of Supervisors to set a separate classification of vehicle through the personal property taxation for single vehicle owned by a member or an auxiliary member. It also allows you to exempt the motor vehicle license tax owned for one vehicle by a volunteer fire and rescue member or auxiliary member. So the ordinance provided and advertised pursuant to Code of Virginia 15 to 1427 does both of those things. It eliminates the former credit process and institutes just clearly two, two items, one in Section 229 and one in Section 2211. The first creates a separate personal property tax rate for active members. It makes it clear that it tracks the Code of Virginia in Section 58.1, 3506A, Sections 15 and 16, and then exempts the motor vehicle license tax as allowed by the Code of Virginia 462, 752A, Sections 2 through 5. So in doing this, it would change the process from a credit to a different assessment classification. And in doing that, the Code of Virginia requires this to be done, certain timetables to be met in the Commissioner of Revenue to do that, and the chiefs would have to provide information to the Commissioner of Revenue in January. As such, as you can see in the top of this ordinance, I have an effective date of January 1, 2022, because we still need to go through the current credit process, which we're right in the middle of, and those credit documents are due within the next month or two.
All right. So I need to open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the courthouse that would like to speak to this particular item?
War of attrition.
Yes. Seeing none, going to Zoom. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Seeing none, closing the public hearing. Board discussion motioned.
I would make a motion to move forward. Any discussion that we adopt the ordinance changes are reflected in the packet?
And is the ordinance incorporated effective January 1, 2022?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second Ms. Smith's motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just say, I did speak to some chiefs today, and I would just say, if there's an opportunity to ever do anything more for some folks that maybe don't own very expensive vehicles, you know, it might be a nice gesture. But they were very happy with the changes reflected in today's agenda.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, God. Sorry. I am tired.
We're all getting better at this after, like-
Mr. Fraser? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also.
And thank you to all our volunteers for all they do.
Okay. Now we're on number seven.
Number seven is somewhat parallel to the resolution the Board adopted earlier tonight, ending the local declaration for the pandemic. This item is an ordinance to repeal the earlier ordinance adopted that effectuated temporary changes in certain local ordinances, policies, procedures, deadlines, et cetera, due to the pandemic. Because those continuity of government ordinance was adopted as an ordinance, to repeal it, you must repeal it as an ordinance, which required advertisement in the local paper pursuant to Section 15 to 1427. That's been done. The ordinance is before you with essentially the entire preamble that was not used before, and the now-therefore-beer-ordained section very clearly states that the most recently adopted ordinance of July 6, 2020, for these, for those purposes I identified, would be hereby repealed effective as of the adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you for that. Opening the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to the repeal? Seeing none in the courtroom? Anyone still on Zoom? Seeing none, closing the public hearing.
No, do we repeal the ordinance?
So we're adopting, we're adopting an ordinance-
You're adopting the ordinance?
That repeals the uncodified continuity of government ordinance.
Right. Adopting the, the ordinance provided in your packet, repealing the earlier ordinance.
A motion, Mr. Fraser, a second, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Can he repeat all that anything?
No. I knew you'd say that once tonight.
I had to do it once.
Once.
Roll call, vote. Mr. Fraser? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Rolling right along.
Well, we wore everyone down.
Yes.
And next is a public hearing that discussed with the Board at your last meeting, and was requested by the sheriff to establish a fee for the e-summons fund. This is a fund that would be built and money tracked completely separate by charging $5 on cost in each criminal and traffic case. FOC here has a very similar ordinance, and these dollars can then be used for technology upgrades in the deputy vehicles as necessary to provide those summons at the car, e-summons. They're tracked separately, can only be used for that purpose.
Okay.
Opening the public hearing on e-summons fund. Nobody? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? No. Closing the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the provided ordinance, which amends Chapter 103 of the Rapid County Code to incorporate the changes provided on, on the e-summons fund.
A motion?
Second. And I would just add that I think the sheriff thinks it's a good idea, so we should, we should move ahead with it.
She will be coming to the Board at some point in time, seeking some funding for equipment to kickstart this MDTs in her vehicles to allow this, and I encourage her to get that proposal to me.
Great.
That was great.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Mr. Fraser? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. We did nine. Renewal of Mulkey Mountain.
Mulkey Mountain.
Oh, Michelle's up.
Hey.
Michelle, you're still here.
We're still here. The Mulkey Mountain Ag and Forestry District was created in 1981 and has been renewed through the years. This renewal includes 2,767.6446 acres wanting to renew. Each time it's renewed for 10 years, the Agricultural and Forestry Advisory Committee reviewed the applications. They recommended approval to the Planning Commission on June 16, and the Planning Commission also on June 16 recommended approval to the Board.
Thank you for that. Public hearing opened for the renewal of Mulkey Mountain.
What's your district?
No one in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom?
Could be way bigger.
Not seeing anyone on Zoom. Closing the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I will, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the ordinance presented in our packet tonight, which renews Mulkey Mountain Agricultural and Forestry District, and note that it was a vote from the Planning Commission unanimous for approval of, of the renewal for this Ag and Forestry District. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
I also. Well done, team. All right. Got with all of them, right?
Yes. Now you have public comment.
Now I have public comment. Opening up public comment. There's so many people still in the room. Yes, sir.
Can we limit him to 30 seconds?
Didn't you start here, too? Did you start here, too? Okay.
He didn't mean that. He did not mean that.
Good evening, good night, whatever, whatever is most appropriate for you.
Almost good morning.
Almost good morning. Robert Yalf from Pima District. I hope you will indulge me. I know it's late, but I wanted to pass along to you an observation that I have seen tonight and this afternoon, and it's one that I've contemplated several months ago, and it's something that is mostly an FYI, or for your information. I, I hope you and others have noted this, or may have, or will take note of this for future consideration. It is a topic that I find concerning, especially when there are many important tasks ahead of Rapid County Government. On several occasions today, tonight, whatever, the Board of Supervisors discussed or made a decision to direct the broadband authority to consider a topic or subject. On the surface, there isn't really an issue. In most cases, the BOS makes such a decision and sends it to a committee or an authority that is mostly composed of appointed members from the county or the community with one or two BOS members on that, on that committee or authority. In the case of the broadband authority, that body is currently composed in its entirety of members that also serve as elected members of the Board of Supervisors. On the one hand, I understand why this is the case. There's a lot of things going on. But I personally find it to be a possible issue now and for the future. You, the Board of Supervisors, is directing an authority that is composed of the same people to do something. On a deeper consideration, I find that to be somewhat inappropriate, and, most importantly, anti-Republican in nature. Now, please note that when I say Republican, I don't refer to the political party. Instead, I reference the Republican form of government that Benjamin Franklin and the other founding fathers intended us, for us to have at every level of government, including federal, state, and local. I'm going to offer a comparison here, and I hope you will, you may not completely understand it, but I hope you will take, or at least understand some of the general aspects. As most of you know, I am a civil war or war between the states reenactor. Generally, our hobby is divided into companies, which belong to battalions, that serve under divisions or under parent organizations. Loosely, these companies serve at the pleasure of their battalions. They're also independent, but anyway. In that same manner, I see committees or authorities somewhat like companies, and the Board of Supervisors like battalions. In, in the company that I am a member of, we have an established bylaws, as do many others. And not every company has this particular clause that I'm going to reference. We have a provision that prevents company members that are appointed or elected to our battalion staff from also serving as company officers. As to why we have this provision, serving in both capacities has been observed to potentially cause conflicts of interest. In, in the case here, with the BOS and the broadband authority, I can't help but wonder if that has potential to cause larger problems down the road. You, the members may, as members of both entities, may state or do tasks that may benefit one or another, or whatever. As, as another aspect, the situation you have at present is one that is minor, but significant in that it excludes participation from county residents. Think, what, to my point here is, I hope you will take careful consideration of what I've just said, and what's going, what's the situation you're in. And again, I understand it. But I'm hopeful that in the future, the broadband authority will be composed of other people from the community, and thus separate or isolate the supervisors from that, from, from being part of it, both in- of it, both entities as a whole. Thank you.
Very logical, thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on Zoom? All right, I am going to close public comment. Should, can I have a-
Right, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to make sure administratively that we're clean, we have moved certain matters that were subject to public hearings tonight, or one matter.
Right, so you-
I just want to make sure that by adjourn in our meeting, we're-
Yeah, I think the meeting needs to adjourn, but you already recessed the one public hearing to date specific.
So those hearings-
But this meeting can end.
The meeting can, that's what I want to make sure. Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Yes, motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.